And it goes more or less like this. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment, which is being held on Wednesday, the 25th of July, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the municipal complex. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this regular meeting has been provided by prominently displaying the schedule of regular meetings on the official notice board in the municipal complex, and by transmitting a copy of this schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Trenton Times, The Trentonian, and to Comcast Cable of New Jersey Incorporated. A copy was also filed with the Clerk of Princeton. Could you call the roll for us, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes, here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davich?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Here.
Mr. Valvanes?
Here.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
Thank you.
Good. So we have some housekeeping to do, as we always do at the beginning of the meeting. And the first issue is the minutes of 1 May 25, 2018. And these were not sent in our package, but placed on a pile of papers this evening. If there are any changes or modifications to these that need to be made, we should do that now. If they're acceptable, I'd like a motion to accept and a second to that motion.
So moved.
I have a motion to accept as presented. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
No, second.
I have a second, so can you call the roll for us, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we now have some resolutions to memorialize. And the first one is for 30 McLean Street. That is file number Z1515-237. This was circulated to each of us. The same ritual. If there's no changes needed, a motion to accept is presented. You can make changes now if we need to.
I move to accept.
We have a motion to accept. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
And our attorney will read the names of the people who are eligible to vote.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
The next one is 69 Ferrand Road, and carries file number Z1818-589. Changes needed, they should be made now. If not, a motion to accept as presented and a second to the motion.
So moved.
I have a motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second.
Mr. Floyd, you can't second because you opposed it.
Or you voted no.
You voted no.
Ah, yes.
So will somebody who votes against?
Second.
Okay.
And I'll just read the list. Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
The next one is 127 Jefferson Road, which is file number Z1818-601. Are there any modifications required on this? If not, a motion to accept is presented and a second to the motion.
Motion to accept.
We have a motion to accept.
I'll second it.
And we have a second to the motion.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
And so the last one in this series is 110 Witherspoon Street, which is file number Z1717-546, the Paul Robeson House. Are there any changes needed in this? It's a fairly long one. If not, a motion to accept and a second to the motion.
I'll move to accept.
There's a motion to accept.
Second.
We have a second to the motion.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
And now we come to what you've all been waiting for, which is the applications for this evening. 32 Markham Road is the first of these, and carries the case number Z1818-615. Is there somebody here to... Would you come to the table in the front? And I'll get Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memorandum to the board, and then ask you to present your case.
Thank you.
Mr. Bridger.
Mr. Bridger, before I swear you in, I'll note the noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction to hear the application and will swear you in for the evening. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. The applicant, John Womack and Gene Ross, are the owners of 32 Markham Road, seeking C1, C2 variance relief to permit the reconstruction of a garage in exception to the required setbacks and coverage requirements. Properties located in the R3 zone, subject to the use in bulk regulations in Section 17A, 241 and 245 of the Princeton Land Use Ordinance. Subject is noncomplying with respect to the required lot area, which is 7,200 square feet, and the existing lot, 6,000. It's noncomplying with respect to the accessory structure setback side yard. It's 2.5 feet to the foundation, 1.5 feet to the overhang. And the rear yard setback, the accessory structure requirement's 5 feet, and it's 2.6 feet to the foundation and 1.6 feet to the overhang. The accessory structure coverage of the rear yard is restricted to 20%, and it's currently And building coverage, I calculated it at 28.5%. And basically, Mr. Womack is the owner of an 18-by-20-foot garage that was damaged by a falling tree limb. It's currently unsafe and unusable. He's requesting approval to reconstruct it in the exact same location that it is now, on the foundation that is there now. The plans do reflect two different overhangs, one foot overhang on one side and 1.6 overhang on the other. The setback is measured to the overhang. We suggest that the applicant revise the drawings to have a 1-foot overhang on all sides and not 1.5 feet and 1.5 on the other. There was an ordinance before that did permit the reconstruction of noncomplying structures as long as they were built in the same footprint, same FAR, and the same setbacks, and did not increase any degrees of noncomplying. However, that ordinance was rescinded several years ago, and it's a variance situation now to rebuild this structure in its current location. So he would be seeking variance relief for the accessory structure side yard setback requirement's 5, he's 1.5. And then the rear yard requirement is also 5, and he's 1.6 feet. The coverage will stay the same at 21.7. That's the rear yard coverage of the accessory structure, which the ordinance has a requirement. Accessory structures cannot exceed 20% of the rear or side yard, whatever they're located in. So he exceeds that slightly, and the building coverage has exceeded slightly. He's requested both the C1 and C2 criteria. And that's a brief synopsis. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Do we have any questions, Mr. Bridger? So, if you would care to, I believe we'll need to be sworn.
Mr. Womack, if you would raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And just to be sure, all of the paperwork is correct for this? So can you tell us what you really want to do?
Thank you. Last March, probably, I think, 5th or 6th of March, there was a heavy wet snowfall. We had about 6 inches on the ground.
Is your microphone turned on?
I don't know.
It is. You just need to...
Oh. Okay. Is this better?
Speak into it. This is better.
Thank you. There was a snowfall of about 6 inches of heavy wet snow, and the weight of that snow brought down a large branch off an ash tree which overhangs the yard. It damaged my garage, it damaged my neighbor's garage, somewhat less. My garage, when the insurance folks came and looked at it, they said it needed to be torn down and rebuilt. Shortly after that, I learned that in order for that to happen, I need to apply to you for a variance. So that's what I'm doing. Let's see. The garage, I've lived in the house since 1966. The garage was there when I arrived. And a few years after I arrived, the floor of the garage was mud, and it got flooded and got very wet. So I put in a reinforced concrete floor, probably about 1970, which of course goes right up to the footings of the building. So to relocate the building would sort of mess up the yard, but I would also have to deal with the reinforced floor, to allow it to be moved. So I'm hoping to get permission to rebuild the structure pretty much as it is at the moment. I included in my package a sketch of the block of houses on which I live. It's a block with two back-to-back and four. So there are eight properties, all on the same size lots, all of which are smaller than conforming. But seven of those eight properties have a garage which also is too close to the setback. So if all the garages were knocked down, we'd all be coming back to consult with you. So I think I can assert that it's not going to cause any change to the neighborhood to rebuild in pretty much the same fashion. I think those are the salient points, not to take very much of your time.
There was an issue about the roof overhang. Is it 1 foot all the way around?
As it exists at the moment, it is 1 foot all the way around.
Whereas previously, it was 1.5.
No, no, no. It's always been 1 foot all around. And the 1.5 was frankly a mistake that the insurance company's guy who put together the estimate and the drafting. So if it makes a significant difference, it feels to me as though I could reduce that to a 6-inch overhang because...
I should still let the water drip onto the ground?
Yes, indeed. So it would still work. Thank you.
And the old structure has been completely removed?
No. Until I knew what was happening, the old structure is still there because the insurance folks would like to have one activity, you know, we'll take down what's there and rebuild what is allowed to be rebuilt.
So at the moment, all that is there is the concrete footing?
No, no, no. At the moment, the garage is there with holes in the roof, and most of the stuff has been removed from it. Nothing is getting damaged anymore, it just isn't very functional.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
The members of the board have anything, any questions? Is there anyone in the audience who is here to address this case? I see no one. Okay. So are we ready to go into executive session? All right. So let's make a decision.
I move we accept the proposal.
Any conditions? Exterior lighting? Taking care of water draining from the roof and making sure it doesn't go onto others' land? Sorry?
Our standing conditions, no runoff onto adjacent properties and any light source. You have to be hidden.
I'm sorry.
The two conditions that we use as a standard basis of approval is any drainage from the garage can't drain onto an adjacent property. And if you have exterior lighting on the garage, you're not going to have a door light or something? Well, if you do, the light source of the light itself cannot be visible.
Okay.
That's it.
How do I know where the drainage is going? I mean, it's been there for 50 years, nobody has ever complained.
Basically, you don't want to, since it's going to be pretty close to the property line, you don't want to direct it to the property. You don't direct it front and back, but not to the side.
Yeah, you don't want light shining over your property, basically. I have neighbors across the road with a garage with lights on, and it shines in my bedroom window, so it's a source of rage.
The electrical connection gave up 20 years ago.
Are there any other?
Yeah, just for clarification, as a C1 variance or a C2? So C1 being the hardship due to lot dimensions or the location of the house on the lot vis a vis the garage?
C1 is fine.
C1?
Would be my recommendation.
All right.
I think that's okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
You're seconding? Okay. So then, could you call the roll for us, please, Claudia?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
That wasn't too painful.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Our next...
Yes, thank you.
Our next case is 78 Dempsey Avenue, which carries the case number Z1818-610. And everything is in order, and we can hear the case, is that true?
Yes, that's correct.
Good. I'm going to do the same with you as I did with the previous one. I'm going to get Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memorandum into the record, and then I'll ask you to make your case. Mr. Bridger.
Thank you. The applicant, Roy Selig, is applying for a C1 variance to permit the construction of an accessory building in exception to lot width. Properties located in the R6 zone, subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with 10B 241 and 245 of the Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. The applicant is proposing, well, the lot's noncomplying with respect to lot width. The requirement is 85 feet, and he's at 82.2. He's proposing to construct a 28-by-32 accessory building with a 16-foot height. The applicant states the structure will be used for storage, space for household items, gardening equipment, and studio space for a woodworking hobby. The building will be serviced with electricity but no plumbing. The construction of the structure does not comply with the required lot width, as I said earlier, requirement's 85, and he's at 82.5. And he's requested consideration under the C1 criteria. And that's if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Do we have questions, Mr. Bridger? No. Okay.
Mr. Selig, we need to swear you in.
Of course.
If you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for hearing the case. So I'm a homeowner and applicant, so forgive me if I don't quite understand all the process here. I've tried to do my homework. About 10 months ago, my father came to live with us at 78 Dempsey. We've lived in Princeton for eight years now. He's an 86-year-old man, and has brought a lot of memorabilia with him from a long-lived life, which has put a bit of strain on us in the house in terms of finding places for everything. And it gave us the idea to build a accessory building in the back, because as you may know, the lots where the houses on Dempsey are ranch houses with very little storage capacity in them. The attics are very shallow. We have about 6 by 6 feet of storage in our attic. So the primary use for this would be household storage to bring some of his memorabilia into that and keep it safe. My wife gardens, and it would be another reason to have the accessory structure. And then I have a woodworking hobby. It's just a hobby. I'm a software developer by trade. So as I've gone through the variance requirements, I'm asking for a variance for lot width. I'm at 82.2 feet, and required 85 feet. What I've done to try to come as close to the audience as possible is to set the building in the back of our yard. It's not visible from the street. It is in keeping with houses like it. I've chosen materials and design to make it look like it belongs to the space. And we will have exterior lights. I understand the concern for them being downlights, and we will specify downlights for those so that we don't interfere with our neighbors. Because it's a woodworking hobby, I'll also insulate the building and keep it conditioned so that there isn't noise that's emanating that would disturb neighbors as well. As part of the process, we canvassed the neighborhood, spoke with 15 of the 21 neighbors that would be, you know, in the 200-foot radius that we had to address, and received no objections, and in fact, received two letters of support, which I think you have in your packets. So we ask for your consideration in this matter.
And we just get the title of your thing on the screen, or are you going to show us something else?
Mr. Bridger stole a bit of my thunder. I had prepared all of these slides, but let me show you what the building looks like. It's in your packets, but this is the site itself, our backyard. The Sutkins live behind us, that's the yellow house. There's a fence, a stockade fence that divides it. It's on the property line, they're close by. It's a 6-foot stockade fence. In terms of the site plan, it's been reviewed by engineering, and the plan's been approved in consideration of the runoff of water from the site, the building itself. We've created a rain garden to capture that water on our property so it doesn't go onto a neighbor's properties. And we've reviewed the plans with our adjacent neighbors so they're aware of it. One of the letters of support comes from Ravi, who's my next-door neighbor to the south, who would be, if anyone were to be impacted by runoff, it would be him, and he's satisfied and has written a letter of support.
Good. Thank you.
Sure.
Do we have questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is the building setback to height ratio, there's no information on that? Is that something that was studied?
In the R6 zone, excuse me, in the R6 zone, my understanding is that there is no setback to height ratio required.
Okay.
And Mr. Bridger, you can weigh in there.
That is correct.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this case?
I actually have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
No, no problem. But for the lot width, would this be permitted as of right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now it doesn't seem to be any comments. Do we need to discuss this case? It seems to me one of the standard problems that Princeton had because zoning was plunked on pre-existing lots.
Any trees need to be removed? It doesn't look like it from your drawing.
No. No.
So do we have a motion?
Did you open it to public comment?
I did.
Oh, you did?
And nobody indicated a desire to say anything.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal as presented, again with our standard...
With the lighting and the drainage issues, which have both been addressed in the presentation.
And I would like to say, I think it's a very well-thought-out proposal.
Yes.
Thank you.
And well put together so that we could actually read it without littering things all over the floor.
As much as I like you all, I just wanted to be here once.
We have a motion to accept. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
So accepted with the conditions. Could you call the roll for us, and please, Claudia?
Yes. This is Exhibit, Carrie. Exhibit A1.
Yes, can you get the slides, Mr. Davich?
Surely. Do you need that tonight, or shall I? If you have it tonight, you can. Okay.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our next case is 44 Morgan Place, and carries the case number Z1818-585. A single-family house being constructed on the side. I'll get Mr. Bridger to read his memorandum into the record.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Bridger Investments LLC is the owner of 44 Morgan Place. TJB Architects is the applicant. They're requesting C1, C2 variance relief to permit the construction of a new single-family home on a nonconforming lot. Subject property is located in the R5 zone, subject to the use and regulations in accordance with 10B 253, 255, and 246 of the former Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. Existing single-family use is permitted as of right. The subject lot's noncomplying with respect to the required lot area, which is 21,780 square feet. The existing lot area is 11,159 square feet. It's not complying with respect to the required 75-foot lot frontage. The existing is 65 feet 9. It's not complying with respect to the lot depth requirement of 100. Existing is 96.9. Existing single-family dwelling is proposed to be demolished and a new structure will be constructed. The applicant should advise the board as to whether they have contacted any adjoining landowners, inquiring if they wish to buy the subject lot or sell a portion of their lot to create a new complying lot. The applicant indicates that the new single-family home will comply with all the applicable bulk requirements. Again, the variances required are lot area requirements 21,780, existing's 11,159, lot frontage requirement's 75, existing is 65.9 feet, and lot depth requirement's 100, and existing is 96.9. And they've requested consideration under the C1 and C2 criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Do we have questions, Mr. Bridger? Okay, if you would.
Good evening. My name's James Mitchell. I'm with Hamrow Mitchell in Dayton, New Jersey, and I'm the attorney representing the applicant, TJB Architects, regarding the property at 44 Morgan Place. Although that was a good summary of the application, I would just want to highlight a couple more items before, starting with my witnesses. We do seek to remove an existing home on the property and replace it with a new home. The existing home and lot are nonconforming. The home, that is, the structure itself is existing as exists, is nonconforming as to front setback, side setback, and height. And the new design will eliminate all nonconformities regarding the structure, as well as not create any new nonconformities. So what we are left with is simply the conditions of the long-existing lot that we are proposing to locate upon, and we believe we are locating in a location more in keeping with the ordinance on that lot, which allows us to address all the bulk standards other than those existing conditions related to the lot itself. I do have two planned witnesses this evening. Our first witness will be our architect, Timothy Burton, who is also the applicant, and he will address the existing conditions of the property and explain what we propose to construct. And our second witness will be Jim Kyle, our professional planner, who will address the planning impacts of the application and address the relief required, as well as the proofs for that relief. If there's no questions, me, I'll start with Mr. Burton.
Mr. Burton, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.[1760.83]
And, Mr. Burton, for the board's benefit, can you review your credentials and education?
I'm a licensed architect and building inspector. I've had my New Jersey certificate for thirty-five years, ten years on my building inspector license. I started my firm in two thousand eight. Before that, I was with a variety of firms and corporations as an architect, up to and including the Hillier Group. I've been basically in the area for, since I was sixteen years old, and I have gone to New Jersey Institute, excuse me, I attended New Jersey Institute of Architecture and received my Bachelor of Architecture.
Could you talk more into the microphone?
Can you hear me now?
I'm job hearing you.
Better? Is that better?
Slightly.
How about this?
That's much.
How's that? Everybody can hear me? Sorry. I received my Bachelor of Architecture from New Jersey Institute of Technology in nineteen seventy-nine. I've been licensed as an architect for thirty-five years.
Have you previously testified?
I think we have no trouble in accepting a certificate. Thank you.
Okay. Can you describe the existing conditions and then our proposal?
Yes. You know, when you're in a situation like that, you always anticipate the first question, which is, could you have renovated? And I think there were three primary reasons why this was problematic in this particular site and structure. I think primarily, it's functionally obsolete in terms of the condition of the existing house. And I think to bring it back to what would be the second issue, which was market competitive for a real estate Class A property that would command the investment cost, it would have required so much renovation that it would have triggered what would be the third issue, which was a, basically, a new structure, albeit maybe you're using the foundations or some of the buildings, but effectively, you're doing so much work that it is effectively a new structure. And by that, the site was the third issue, saying that there were so many inherent setback issues, height, side and front. So, therein is where we are right now, which is to design a house that we feel is in keeping with the area. It's competitive with the market and does a lot to resolve what I noted as far as the third issue, which is there were setback issues. What in the house that is currently there at a seventeen-foot actual setback, we've doubled that and eliminated the issues on the side setback. We've eliminated the issue on the height setback. And at the same time, we've met the rest of the bulk requirements. As the site stands, we really couldn't change that. But again, to speak to the issues inherent with the site and that building, functionally obsolete in terms of a lot of the construction, and as an inspector and also as an architect, I would say illegal, or needing to be changed so significantly in terms of material costs, insulation, energy codes needing to be changed significantly. And also, we looked at the house in terms of how we could fit in and mitigate what were the problems with the setbacks. We feel this is a better solution.
In terms of what you're proposing to do, were there other, did you take into account the nature of the existing site, the existing vegetation, the driveway, or anything like that in your design?
Yes. First of all, the existing driveway actually encroached, so we've changed that. We would have hoped to, as we understand sensitivity in Princeton, have a side entry to the garage, but it was just not physically possible, given you're on a cul-de-sac, you have a tapering site. The widths are just what they are. And you also have a, it's an undersized lot. So, we had the issue of placing the house, we had the garage, we moved the driveway such that, that we solved.
And when you say it encroached, you mean that the driveway, the existing driveway is actually partially on the adjoining property owners' property?
Exactly. Additionally, we saw that there were two trees which were problematic. One was clearly distressed. The other was dead. We talked to the arborist. We've got the approvals. We had taken them down. There'll be no other. Reduction in trees, and we're in fact pledging to put in the ratio and more of trees that we had taken down upon approval.
Okay. And, first of all, are there any questions at this point? Other, if there aren't, we'll talk more about the house that you're proposing and its scale and nature.
So, what we're proposing, and I was the architect on twenty-seven Morgan, which is several doors down, not unlike that, thirty-three hundred square feet, three bedrooms, two and a half baths. Basically, as I said, market competitive, otherwise in compliance with the bulk requirements for the zone, R5. And also, we also looked at it for anything we could do as far as compliance above and beyond with the energy codes, with ways that we can further the notion of building respectably. I mean, certainly, within the process of building, there are things you can do, and there are things that just, you know, you can't, or you just don't have the scale to do it. But certainly, you know, we're, in what we proposed here, we're not doing anything that is, at a minimum, we want to have it be something which we're all proud of, and also something that will market itself well because it respects, you know, the environment.
And I see you have, is that a rendering of the proposed building?
The proposed rendering is on the easel. Let it be Exhibit One.
You might identify that as Exhibit A1.
Exhibit One.
And perhaps you could move it on the easel so that we can see it a little more easily. It's obscured by this ridiculously high parapet. That's better.
Can everyone? How about if we push it back towards that way? That way the audience and the board will both see it?
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is that, that looks slightly different than the drawings that we have in front of us. Is that supposed to look like the elevations we have?
I believe it's not unlike the drawings that you have. And I would suggest that maybe it's because of material changes.
Okay.
And perspective. It always happens when you go from a dead-on orthographic to a perspective.
It's just that the garage roof looks a lot bigger in that picture than it does to me on the drawing.
Probably because of the angle.
Is it correct that the perspective, the artificial perspective on this, as if you were taking the photograph from at the corner of the garage?
It would be closer into the corner of the property line.
Thank you. Actually, I see what he says. The left end of the upper roof looks like it extends further over than it does on the drawing itself. It's fine. It's fine. I would just, you say it's the same. That's good enough.
All right. And if there's a concern, we can certainly get into the details.
No, no, no. That was a question.
So, the garage takes up about half of the frontage of the house. Is that right?
Yes.
More or less.
More or less. We tried to play it down, having two doors versus one door. You know, if you look at any building standard, they're going to tell you you have to have a twenty-two by twenty-two-foot garage. And certainly, with this environment in many towns, that you really want to reduce the garage as much as you can. It effectively is nineteen by, nineteen-six by nineteen-six. Not to get into the weeds on it, but that is the bare minimum, and what we've built is the bare minimum for a garage.
And just looking at the scale drawing, it does appear that it is significantly, just roughly scaling it, less than half of the front, because you had just said it was approximately half. Looked like
Yeah.
Between half and
So
Maybe a third?
Three eighths versus five eighths.
Right. Okay.
But I agree. You know, it's always the problem of an architect to not celebrate the garage door and give a house a sense of entry. I applaud Princeton for what they're doing, for trying to make the side entry. Unfortunately, some sites, you just can't do that.
And then, we'll talk a little bit more about the shape with our next witness, but I don't know if we drew it out. Can you describe the shape of this lot, width at the front and at the rear?
It's pie-shaped, for lack of a more exact term. And we, due to the taper, we had a problem with the width of building line. But again, while the R5 zone would say twenty-five feet, we respected the comments that came back to us, and we took it from an actual seventeen to a proposed thirty-four, which is seven feet on top of the, excuse me, it's significantly more on top of the existing than, and also certainly is beyond the twenty-five-foot setback. So, it really pushes the house back in line with the other houses on the block.
Yeah.
Which we understand is really the intent, at the sacrifice of a backyard. But we felt that was worth it for the quality of the house.
All right. If there are not other questions at this time about the structure itself that's proposed and the site, I would
I do have a question. The house is set back thirty-four feet, two inches from the property line.
Can you speak to the microphone?
Sorry?
Can you speak to the microphone?
Oh, sure. No problem. The house is set back thirty-four feet from the property line.
Can you get off the video? Sorry.
Okay. I mean, this is, I have the microphone on, so. Okay. So, the house is set back thirty-four feet from the street. As in, as in the case in most houses in Princeton, people park in front of the garage. They don't necessarily put their cars in the, both cars in the garage. There is no parking allowed in the front yard setback, I believe. And you've only got ten feet between the garage and the front yard setback. So, is that a concern?
I mean, it will be an enforcement issue, honestly. If there's an issue with parking in the front yard, I believe we're significantly increasing the distance over the existing structure, in terms of, I think, the entire driveway on the existing structure is in the front setback on the proposed to-be-demolished home.
Oh, yeah. It has nothing to do with the existing house.
No, no. I'm talking about it because in terms of, we're making it better, is my point. That even if you, you know, even if we can't park in there, they'll have to park in the garages.
All right. I mean, as you probably well aware, enforcing that is very difficult. But, you know, it is in fact the fact that people do that. And, you know, this is a significant increase in the size of the house from what it currently exists.
And what percentage is the increase?
Well, roughly calculated, it's a third increase.
Yeah. It's big.
But, but
Seventeen hundred feet is clear. You're too much.
But we're a county garage. So
No, answer that, actually. Your thirty-two hundred square feet, does that include the garage or not?
Yes, yes.
And the seventeen hundred square foot calculation for the existing structure does not include the garage? So, the residential area of the home is approximately a one-third increase?
Roughly. And I would suggest also that it's, on the garage itself, being two-car garage, would have the facility to have both cars be parked in the garage. I mean
I understand the intent. I'm just saying, from a practical standpoint, may or may not happen.
May or may not happen. Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
They just have to buy minutes.
I'm sorry?
They just have to buy minutes.
Or smart car.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
Did you, did you say that you designed the other house on the block? That's the new house on the block?
Twenty-seven.
Okay. Twenty-seven. Okay.
Other questions on the structures? Or is it the custom to open after each witness to the public, or at the end of the presentation? I don't mind.
I have a question, actually, about, not the structure, but the trees. You said there were, there was one that was distressed and the other was dead. I saw that one was supposed to go, there was an X through one that was like in the front, right? And then there was one that seemed like it would be, you know, the house would have landed on it. So, it was in the back. Are those the two, or they're
Those are the two.
So, they're gone already?
They're gone. The one that the house would, the X where the house would be over, the proposed house would be over, was a hazard. It was dead and leaning.
No, I just wondered if
The arborist
Those were the two that you were
Those were the two.
And I guess the question you raised, I mean, the question behind it would be, is there any way to orient the house back a little further or change it? Or you might have already checked that out.
When you look at the setback, the rear yard setback, the house is pretty close to the rear yard.
I think we've pushed it back between topography and setback as far as we could.
No, I don't necessarily disagree with you. I'm just saying, from a practical standpoint, I think we all can safely assume that people will park in front of the garage.
I mean, one suggestion might be, and certainly, I'm speaking on the fly here, but if you look at the way we've tried to play down the two garage doors as best we could, one of the other ways to do it would be to almost slip the most outer of the garage doors back, so that would give space between the setback and the garage door. And we could do that.
Well, I mean, it's, you've only got ten feet, so if you move it back another two feet, from a practical standpoint, you're not going to get a car that's smaller than sixteen feet unless you park right up against the garage door. It's not, it'll help a little bit, but not much.
No, actually, you could, if you were you to look at the plan, the site plan GR1, and you could see that there's a plane that you could slip it back.
Yeah, there's a setback. There's an offset.
And you probably could shoot another eight inch, eight feet on it.
You know, that's, it's, I understand that. I appreciate that. But it doesn't solve the problem.
Yeah. Exactly.
Okay.
All right. So, keep on going with your presentation, then I'll ask
Okay, thank you.
Public if they want to make comments.
I think unless, Tim, is there anything you have, looking to cover, we haven't covered? Okay. Then we'll move to our planner, Jim Kyle. And if, Jim, if you can review your credentials and experience
Let me be sworn first, and then
Yes, sir. Would you state your name again for the record?
Sure. It's James. Last name is Kyle. K-Y-L-E.
And, Mr. Kyle, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm sure. Planners tend to keep on going.
I'm sorry?
Concise to the point.
Yes, sir.
Planners keep on talking.
Just to familiarize the board with my qualifications, I've appeared here, but it was probably three or four years ago. I have a Bachelor of Science in Environmental Planning and Design from Rutgers, which I received in nineteen ninety-six. I've been a practicing planner for twenty years, currently advise a number of municipalities as a consultant, working for six communities in both Warren and Hunterdon County. I've appeared before over a hundred and eighty boards in the state, and qualified as an expert in planning, also qualified as an expert in Superior Court in Somerville, licensed as a professional planner, and also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners.
Good. No problem.
Thank you. Just to jump right in, and I'll try to keep it brief, because I think the relief here that we're seeking is fairly straightforward. But I was retained by the applicant, Mr. Burton, to just review these variance issues with the proposal that's before the board this evening. I've reviewed all the plans that were associated with the application, the application form, the notice. I've also reviewed the master plan and zoning ordinance and visited the site as well. And I did produce one exhibit that I just want to pass out.
Marking A2, and I believe it's been passed out before.
Oh, okay. So, A2 is a two thousand fifteen aerial photo and tax parcel base map. This shows the property in question, Block sixty-eight oh two, Lot twenty-one, known as forty-four Morgan Place, outlined in yellow. You can see it's at the very end, the southern end of Morgan Place. And I'll just refer back to this during my testimony, but this is just to orient the board. It shows the existing structure, and as Mr. Mitchell noted, we do have two conditions that are non-conforming with respect to this structure. Side yard setback is currently five point two four feet, or fifteen feet is required, and then the front yard setback is seventeen point six three, where twenty-five feet is required. And as noted, we're proposing no other bulk relief other than those conditions that are associated with this lot today. So, we're going to comply with all required setbacks, and importantly, FAR, and also the height, the ratio of the setback to that. So, I think it's important to note that we're not asking for an increase in the permitted FAR. We're rightsizing this dwelling for the size of the lot, and it's what's permitted under ordinance, and I think that's important. So, as we've described, there are three existing conditions of this lot that require variance relief. The first is for lot area. Twenty-one thousand seven eighty is required, and we have eleven thousand one fifty-nine. Lot frontage, seventy-five is required, sixty-five point nine exists. And then lot depth, a hundred feet is required, and we have ninety-six point six. So, when we review these in the context of the positive and negative criteria, I think on the positive, this clearly qualifies as a C1. If you look at the Exhibit A2 that we've marked here, you can see, well, rather, I'll tell you, all the lots on Morgan Place are substandard as to lot area. So, these are all in the range of, you know, ten, eleven thousand, twelve thousand, thirteen, you know, somewhere in there. So, they're all very, you know, about half of what is required for the R5 zone. So, it's not reasonable to assume that we could acquire any additional lot area from the adjacent lots. You see twenty and twenty-two. the adjacent lots, you see twenty and twenty-two. And then if you note the structures in the rear on Wilson Road, Lots seven and six, those lots are just over what's required for the zone. So there's about three thousand or so square feet between those two lots that we could utilize to make this lot more conforming. But the point being, getting three thousand square feet and adding it to eleven isn't really going to get us anywhere close to the twenty-one thousand. And so there, there's really a hardship in terms of achieving additional lot area. And if you can see the developed condition of those lots as well, every lot that surrounds this is developed with an existing dwelling. You can see in this aerial photograph on Lot six, there was some improvement going on to the rear of that dwelling. And the same holds true for lot frontage. So if you look at the two lots on either side of us, twenty and twenty-two, those are currently deficient as to lot frontage as well. So those are in about the sixty to sixty-five foot range. So there's really no hope of, you know, achieving additional lot frontage because those lots are already non-conforming and we would just be making those conditions worse. Lot depth, it's a similar issue. You know, acquiring additional land from the properties in the rear would not only create a lot, potential lot area issue, but the benefit really of acquiring that additional three point.
Four.
Four feet, you know, would really upset the existing lot pattern that we have there and the mature vegetation that's there. So, you know, the benefit of that, I think, is questionable. And I think the developed condition of these adjacent lots really makes it unrealistic to think that we could acquire additional property to try to remedy some of these and get close to what's required for the standard. So I think we can clearly establish that a hardship exists with the existing condition of the lot. I think there also is some general planning benefit, if you were going to think about this in a C2 analysis, as to the grant to the variances related to removing the existing non-conformities with, with the structure. So as we've described, we're going to create a dwelling that meets all the required bulk standards and is going to be a little more consistent with what's out there in terms of front yard setback and, and things like that. So overall, I think there's a general benefit to the grant to the variances because it's going to create a condition that's more conforming and bring this lot, in terms of the structure, more into conformance with, with the ordinance that we have in place today. Now, in terms of the negative criteria, the reductions, I think, here and, and any surrounding property impacts would be fairly limited. With respect to the depth, the frontage and the size of the lot, this condition has existed for some time. It's consistent with the other lots that are located on Morgan Place, so it's not as though, you know, those conditions are out of character for this portion. And this is, you know, with, with the cul-de-sac neighborhood, it's kind of a discreet neighborhood of dwellings, and you can see it shares a similar lot pattern with Duffield Place, but if you look at the lots on Wilson and, and Westerly Road and Pardo, they're, they're kind of a little bit different character. But overall, this lot is consistent with the ones that we see on Morgan Place. Again, we're going to improve the conditions with respect to side yard setback and front yard setback, and again, noting in terms of any impact to surrounding properties with the dwelling proposed, that we're complying with all other bulk and FAR requirements. So I think in terms of any impact from these conditions, it, it wouldn't rise to the level of being substantial. Now, in terms of the intent and purpose of the zone plan on the second prong, obviously the intent here of area controls is related to provision of density, and these lot frontage and lot width, excuse me, depth controls are really aimed at creating lots that are regular in nature. So I think if you look at this pattern that has existed here for some time, and it respects the existing pattern, there's not really much of a chance that we could change any of these conditions, given that this pattern is established, and no hope of really creating a conforming lot with these standards, I think that overall, you could say that there's no substantial impact. And I think that, you know, again, when you look at the benefits of eliminating some existing non-conforming conditions with the new structure, that, you know, there's actually some benefit to the application overall. So overall, I think we can say there's no substantial impact to the intent and purpose of the zone plan with respect to these, these bulk standards for, that we're seeking relief from.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
If there are no other questions at this time, I would suggest that we open to the public.
Are there members of the audience who wish to address this? We'll give you a microphone at the lacton, and if you come forward, you'll have to be sworn to tell the truth by our attorney, and then we'll listen to what you have to say. You have to identify yourself as well.
Ma'am, could you state your name and address first for the record?
Yes, my name is.
Oops.
My name is.
Hold it up.
My name is.
That's fine. You're talking in the right direction.
My name is Dorothea Dietrich, D-O-R-O-T-H-E-A. Dietrich is D-I-E.
Hold it closer to you.
D-I-E-T-R-I-C-H. I live on twenty-two Morgan Place.
And do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I swear it will be truthful.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your presentation, and we appreciate the difficulties of reconsidering building, or considering building a new on Morgan Place. Morgan Place is a tiny street with thirteen houses, and until recently, it was one of the few remaining streets, I think, in Princeton that was uniform in its architectural history, dating back to the mid nineteen fifties. What is interesting in relation to your plan for the house, you try to create a proper setback, you try to work with the limitations of the lot, and I think we all appreciate the small lots because we are very close to our neighbors along the street. What made the streets so interesting architecturally, historically, was really the scale of the street itself. All the houses on the street, with the exception of one traditionally, were on the front one-story houses. On the rear, there were two stories, with the exception of number twenty-one, which is a modest split level with some elevation. The new kid on the block is the other house that this gentleman, Mr. Burton, designed, which he tried to make fit into the street. It's a remarkably larger and imposing house, which sort of works right now because one only sees it from the side. It's in the middle of the block. This house we are talking about is at the head of the street, so when you enter Morgan Place, what you see immediately is a rather sizable house that is now full two stories with a full attic story, which is surrounded by at least seven one-story houses, which make up the bulk of the street. In fact, as I said, there are only two houses now on the street that are not one-story on the front. And that, I think, is a rather severe concern, because undoubtedly, I should add, that some of the houses are still inhabited by the original people who moved into the street in the, in the mid nineteen fifties, early nineteen sixties. So it's, I think we can anticipate that in some, in the next ten years, some of the other houses will also be addressed as potential teardowns. Now, if they will all become two-story plus attic roof gabled houses with, on lots that are considerably below standard size now in Princeton, you, I ask you to imagine what this will look like when you drive or walk into a street that is now headed by an oversized house, surrounded very close by by other oversized houses, or for the time being, by one-story houses. So I wanted to express my concern about the scale, and I wondered, since you talked about your architectural history and experience in many different countries, whether there may not be a different way of thinking about this lot. This house, and I think many will appreciate it, looks very traditional. Some of us would not mind if it were a little more modern. I'm speaking as an architectural historian, an art historian, and somebody who is interested in urban planning. But would it not be possible to reduce the height of the house and expand it as a wing in the back, for example? That is a model that exists already on the lot, on, on the street, and is something, I think, is rarely considered these days, because we all get these multiple gable houses, cookie cutter houses increasingly built out of vinyl and fake stone. What was nice about the street were the real materials, wood that reflects and absorbs Everywhere, I'm not blaming you for that, but everywhere, these materials have given way to materials that are not particularly visually interesting. Fake stones are never quite the right thing, and surfaces that don't absorb light look very different in a street than some that do. So I'm arguing, on the one hand, I thank you for considering the setback and making that possible, but I'm deeply concerned about the scale of the house, the height of the house, in relation to the history of the street, in relation to the existing buildings that are all one-story buildings, in relation to thinking about the future of the street and its possible transformation, which would be an out-of-scale presentation. And I'm, and I'm also concerned, I must say, and that is my personal concern, about the building materials used, but, um, thank you very much.
Apart from that, she likes that.
But otherwise, it's terrific, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's somebody else, I believe, who wanted to make a comment.
Thank you.
Did I see somebody before? Why don't you come and go through the same red chart? Oh, you're coming?
I'm John Lafter, I'm a resident at thirty-three Morgan Place, and I've lived there for.
Need to be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I've been a resident at Morgan Place and owner for the last forty years plus. And it's clear what we have here. Morgan Place is a cul-de-sac with essentially quarter-acre lots, or less, tucked into a neighborhood with much larger lots. And we have a design for a neighborhood with much larger lots. And if this house is placed on that property, it's going to look crowded and out of place, simple as that. And the rendering beautifully drawn for us and painted demonstrates that. It's a big house. It's going to look like a big house on a small lot. And if that's what the board feels is, is a proper interpretation of the zoning ordinance, well, then you must approve. If you feel that it's an improper interpretation of the zoning ordinance, then you should disapprove. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to swear me in first before I introduce myself?
Yes, introduce yourself first.
Ah, Maury Cohen from twenty-one Morgan Place.
All right, Mr. Cohen, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So I was glad to hear the applicant, in his earlier comments, make reference to the environmental impacts of this proposal and to the energy code, because I put together some prepared comments here, I'm going to work with those in order to make a couple of very precise points that I'd like to convey tonight. So first of all, there is, there's no question that the scale and scope of residential upsizing in Princeton has been accumulating problem for a long time. I came across an article that was published in the New York Times from two thousand and five, that some of you may be familiar with, that promised a solution to the situation here in Princeton. And here we are now, thirteen years later, and the progress on that front has been, I think we'd all agree, at least from a systemic perspective, virtually nil. So we could talk for some time about this chronic inertia, but instead, I'd like to approach the problem from a slightly, maybe less familiar perspective. You're probably accustomed to having neighborhood residents come and speak to you about design aesthetics and housing affordability and issues pertaining to income inequality and so on and so forth. I'd like to talk about this proposal from the standpoint of environmental sustainability and environmental, and, and energy science. So from an energy engineering standpoint, we can be virtually certain that the proposed replacement house here for forty-four Morgan Place will be more, rather than less, energy consumptive than the house that presently occupies the lot.
How can we be sure of that? Are you going to explain that point?
If we wanted to spend the rest of the evening here, I could explain that to you, but what I'd like to do instead is I'd like to submit four articles from the scientific literature that convincingly demonstrate that home size outstrips improvements in energy efficiency, and that when you build bigger, you will consume more energy as a result. So if, with your indulgence, I would just like to submit these along with the other materials from the hearing tonight as, as part of the record.
Okay.
For the record, I'll object, but I.
For the record, you what?
Keep going.
Go ahead. Okay. So, um, okay, so just, I don't mean to take up a lot of time here. It's pointing out that virtually certain outcome is directly contrary to at least two recent township policy statements. In the first instance, the two thousand seventeen reexamine, reexamination report of the Princeton Community Master Plan identifies the promotion of, I quote, "sustainable development practices," unquote, as an objective of future land development. While I acknowledge that there are a multitude of definitions of what constitutes sustainable development, many informed people, I would input myself in that group, would acknowledge that sustainable development requires at the very least a cap on aggregate energy consumption. Second, and perhaps more problematic, in June of last year, Mayor Lempert announced that Princeton Township was joining with over two hundred colleagues around the, Princeton Township was joining with two hundred communities around the country, including eleven others from the state of New Jersey, to pledge support for the Paris Climate Agreement. This accord calls for reducing carbon dioxide emissions, as some of you may be aware, by twenty-six to twenty-eight percent, over nineteen, over two thousand and five levels by twenty-twenty-five. At the time, the mayor was quoted as saying, "It is imperative that towns and cities take the lead on climate action." To back up this pledge, Princeton became part of a network called the Mayor's National Climate Action Agenda. To fully understand the implications of this situation, it's also instructive to take note of a recent report prepared by Princeton University. It was released in March and provides a detailed profile of the township's greenhouse gas emissions. Almost twenty percent of local emissions are associated with residential energy use. The takeaway point here is that the scale of the local housing stock, which is in part a function of the zoning ordinance, and how it is applied is a critically important factor if we were to reach our stated intentions over the next few years. If the board continues to allow applicants to raise modestly sized homes, like the one at forty-four Morgan Place, and construct significantly larger replacements, it will be virtually impossible for the township to meet its Paris targets. It is simply unrealistic to expect that incremental energy efficiency improvements, as I indicated before, and ad hoc renewables substitution, as the township has been pursuing, will ever be able to adequately offset increases in energy, residential energy use due to residential upsizing. I readily acknowledge that the issues that I've put on the table here tonight are much larger than this particular application for variance, but we need to begin this conversation somewhere, and this seems like as good a point as any. Just finally, I'd like to also say, and I speak perhaps on behalf of some of my neighbors, I never received a copy of the notification that was meant to be distributed as part of the Princeton Land Use Ordinance, and had to find out about this meeting on the basis of neighborly exchange over the back fence.
We're getting a lot of these statements made here.
Well, Mr. Cohen, what the state land use law requires is that a notice be sent out by certified mail. It's a letter and explains what's going on. The applicant submitted copies of these mailing, certified mailing slips from the post office, and that's the extent. and that's the extent of what they're required to do. We have received that complaint before, but it appears it must be an issue of mail delivery.
No, actually, I think he's beyond two hundred feet.
Oh, okay.
He's not alone.
Okay.
I missed that one.
All right. Under the state land use law, it's people within two hundred feet, as measured by the zoning officer and the tax assessor, who will receive that certified letter by way of notice. If you're beyond two hundred...
I haven't taken a tape measure out to the street, but I'm virtually certain that I'm within the two hundred mile distance. Two hundred foot distance, sorry.
Again, the applicant, the applicant follows the, the list of owners as prepared by the town. So they sent notice to who they were asked to notice. I don't know if Mr. Bridger wants to speak to you.
If I could just sort of jump in, my property line is closer to the applicant address than my neighbor, Mrs. Dietrich, is.
Well, I could simply note, it's not, seventeen is not on the list of addresses supplied by the town.
Is that an error, or is that...
I'm twenty-one.
I'm sorry, I thought you said twenty-one. So twenty-one is also not on the municipal list of, as being within two hundred feet.
Well, to some extent, it's a moot point. You're here, you've made your statement, which has got very little zoning in it. I agree, it's an important problem.
Well, it does have zoning in it. There are plenty of communities around the country that have recognized that energy usage is an important part of zoning requirements. The fact that Princeton Township is behind the curve on that is failing, I think, of all of our part.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to make a comment? You know the ritual now. Does, does he take, there's a microphone?
Good evening. My name is Patricia Berhau, B-E-R-H-A-U. I live at twenty-one Morgan Place.
Ms. Berhau, before you continue, do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
And you did get a notice, so...
I did not receive the notice, no, but I live with him, so. I just wanted to voice similar concerns to what Dorothea John, you know, my neighbors, my husband had to say about the block itself and the appropriateness of homes being placed on the block. I think to that end, to the extent that, as you say, where the zoning board's issues are here, it does seem to me that a board, a zoning board does have a role in this in terms of choosing to issue variances or not. That's why they're variances. And it doesn't have to keep on allowing, you know, all, all kinds of buildings to be constructed. That could be a way that the town starts to take action and forces changes to the zoning that would be a more conforming policy.
Yeah, the only issue before us really is a lot size issue this evening.
Right, but, but you're being asked...
The correct setbacks on the piece of property, and it's not exceeding four-area ratios and so on. And so the issue that the zoning board is trying to decide is whether this lot can be developed or not.
Developed at all, you're saying, not with regards to size?
I guess we could always put a quonset hut on it, and that's got a small area, and so its energy usage might be lower than the house that is being proposed and so on.
Well, what I'm saying is...
We're not discussing the aesthetics of the building. The only issue really before the board is whether or not this lot can be developed in the way that it is being proposed.
So then what is the point of questions about whether cars are going to be in garages and giving us a picture and all that? I mean, I'm not sure I get that then. I mean, there are other issues at play than just whether or not there's going to be a home on the lot. There are a lot of issues about what type of home, et cetera. And someone's making a request for special dispensation or whatnot.
Only for a lot size?
Sorry?
I was gonna say, we don't set the criteria for approvals. We interpret the ordinance itself.
Right.
And so the, the...
So you're making a decision as to whether or not what's being requested is in, in line with what's the ordinance?
Right. And as Chairman Royce said, the only issue here is the, is the lot size, which is an existing non-conforming lot.
Right.
All the other criteria is established by the council, and the ordinance is being met. So we have to add...
Well, as I said, I think you, if you wanted to get the council's attention, you could. But may I, I have another issue, if I could then. I haven't heard anything about whether or not the proposed building includes a basement, which I'm assuming it does. The other house that has been built on the block is next door to my own, and I was concerned about what that would do to the water table in the area. We, and I can tell you that it has changed the water table in the area. We used to get some water in our basement, and now we don't. So, now, it's somewhat of a happy change, I have to say. You know, let's be honest. But nevertheless, a change. And I don't think that was accounted for. There was no indication. It could have been worse. I asked about that at that meeting. There was kind of a shrug of the shoulders, but I'd be pretty mad if it had gone the other way, I have to tell you. And I'm not convinced that it's going to remain this way for me. And I'm not convinced that it's not the reason that my neighbor and I now have an additional almost creek running between our homes. There's a water line behind there. And I don't know of any, I'm not sure if there's a requirement to present some information about where the rest of this water that's going to be displaced by the digging of a, of a basement is going to go. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. Does anyone else here wishing to make a comment? I see no one. So do you want to make some concluding comments before we go into executive session?
Just one second. Okay, so I'm gonna try to do this per your address, because I'm sorry, I didn't take down your name as well. To twenty-two Morgan. It's, it's, it's a tenuous balance when you look at an FAR, an impervious ratio, not to get too much in the weeds, but there are two criteria to put a structure on a site is how much bulk and how much of the land you cover. So in addressing the issue of more one-story versus two-story, that's the hard part, is putting so much impervious on the site as to displace all that water that otherwise percolates into it. And I'll get to twenty-two's issue on the de-watering shortly. So, yeah, you think about it, but the ultimate issue is on a smaller site and the requirements for, in a developed community, impervious or that land that percolates water, it's, it's as much of a, a challenge as trying to figure out how much of a bulk of a house you can build. Now, what I will tell you is that in the period of time since twenty-seven and forty-four, the town has changed some of its ordinances on what that attic can be, by the way of reducing it. So while not being able to tell you in feet or inches, I feel certain that it's smaller than twenty-seven. And a lot of the attention in the review with the town, which was a very good review, was about just how high this is gonna be, okay? And that's the other play. So it's, it's not without a lot of thought and revision that we got here. But we're concerned about it, too. So on thirty-three Morgan, I, 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 I agree, you know, as, as I would with the gentleman from twenty-one, there's a dialogue needing to be taking place way above my pay grade. You know, and, and I think all communities face this. And lastly, on twenty-one, on the, the de-watering, what naturally happens when you, when you, you excavate a basement, is you have to put drains around it. Some would say French drains, but effectively, it is a drainage. And that ties to a, a, a municipal system, be it the stormwater system or otherwise. And that has the natural process of relieving water pressure in the aquifer around the house, may have been the result. But I know that my next challenge is gonna be going after zoning through engineering and making sure we don't displace water. And there's a whole group that's attentive to that. But it, it, it will be, in, in this situation, different than yours, because we've got the, the different topography on the back. And that's it.
Are you, are you saying that this, that your storm drains, your roof drainage is gonna tie into the municipal...
I don't, at, at, at this point, I don't know until we've gone through the engineering review. But typically, what we do is we have a system where the French drains tie to the, the, either the stormwater system, or they, they go to a, an in-ground retention system.
So you're gonna have some sort of either detention, or you're gonna tie into the municipal...
It's based upon our engineering review.
Well, what do you want to do?
Typically, what I like to do is I like to put the underground retention system.
So, so at minimum, you'll do that?
I would say at, we will see if it's cost beneficial to do that, but I, again, I have not gone through the engineering review, as opposed to tying directly to the municipal system.
But it'll be one of those two systems?
Yes.
Okay.
The borough engineer really has responsibility to state that word.
No, I know the borough engineer, but, but I just, I'm just, he's making a commitment that he's either going to put in some sort of detention or tie into the municipal system. Okay.
Good. Okay.
All right. Well, I'll be very brief and simply state that we believe approval is warranted and that the application will advance the purposes of zoning by removing existing non-conformities without creating any new ones or exacerbating any existing non-conformities, and that we will not create any substantial detriments to the, at all, from the project, and we would request approval.
Good. Thank you. So we go into executive session at this point. What do we need to say to each other?
Well, I have a comment. I, I, personally, I think the house is too large for the lot and the surrounding houses. But that's, that's more of an emotional comment than a factual comment. I think factually, I can't see how there's any basis for us not to approve this, unfortunately. And I say unfortunately, because I think it's, it's a little large. And I do think, you know, parking, you know, again, it's maybe a minor issue, but it's an issue. But factually, if, if we're going to not vote in favor for it, I think there has to be a factual basis to do it.
Yeah.
And I see none. My comment.
Does anyone else have a comment?
Chris is also trying to inform the board that this...
I'm sorry?
...or something on their line.
The board is talking to itself. You're entitled to listen, but not interrupt.
That was it.
That was it. Does anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I, I agree with that statement in terms of it is, a lot of these items aren't a zoning issue. It, it does...
Do you agree that they should be zoning issues, and where can we go to our...
We are not asking you to talk at this point. This is, this is not a public meeting for you to talk whenever you like. You've been given an opportunity to do that. While the board is in executive session, you may listen, and you may complain later or whatever, but not shout while we are talking to each other.
You treated us very rudely when we came here last time to talk about previous applicants. You've seen the results of that five years ago. Here we are again, pleading with you to take action to protect the public purpose.
You're going about taking action in the wrong way if you stand there screaming at the board.
I'm not screaming. I'm having a perfectly reasonable conversation with you.
I'm glad you think it is. Thank you very much for your comments.
Can, can we address this? Can we address this?
Yeah.
The, the, the proper thing to do would be to discuss this with the council. The council creates the ordinance. We only, we only interpret the ordinance. We don't, we don't, so the council's gotta basically make these changes in the ordinance which address your concerns, not...
Why, why do you keep that in mind? We find out about the meeting that will be coming to a voice of community and our decisions.
Well, you know what? It's, we've, we've told people this before, that a concern with, with the ever-increasing size of houses in Princeton has gotta be addressed in the ordinance. It has to go to the council. That's, that's all we can do.
So I understand that your hands are tied, but like I said at the beginning of my comments, this town planner indicated thirteen years ago that he was going to solve this problem. There's been no meaningful action taken. When I came to speak to you five years ago about the house that was built next door to me, I was told by the planner that my own home and virtually all of the other houses on the block, and we heard the same comment here tonight from the applicant, that the other houses on the block are obsolescent.
Did you, did you, after that comment thirteen years, I don't want to get into a lengthy discussion, but did you go to the council and bring this up to the council?
I've written letters to the newspaper, I've written letters to the council, I've written letters to the mayor. There is no place that one can begin to have this public conversation. Like I said, the conversation has been going on for thirteen years.
But the count, the conversation can, can be had with the council.
I understand.
Mr. Cohen, the other thing I'll add is, I don't know if everybody has seen on the website or read about it, there is a neighborhood zoning character study ongoing. A planner's been hired to handle just that matter. I believe they do have meetings, and that is another opportunity to come and speak and explain what your concern is, because unfortunately, it can only be addressed now by municipal ordinance.
I was a member of that group.
I think we need to stop this conversation. We have other work to do this evening. You've made your point, you've been told, make it to the council. I agree with that completely. And talking now is not useful. That won't go anywhere except to heaven. So let us make a decision about this particular case. We have, I believe, a motion or not?
No, we, we haven't finished our conversation.
Okay, well, let us continue our conversation and decide what we think is sensible.
You know, I, I have been here three years, and I, I agree, I feel in sympathy with both of what you've said, that it, it, it's disturbing, and yet it seems as though we don't, we're in kind of a gray area, or maybe not, that there's, in terms of the facts...
I don't think we're, unfortunately, I don't think we're in a gray area. The house does conform to all the setbacks, conforms to the coverage of floor area ratio and everything else. It's, it's, they made an effort to acquire, at least said they tried to acquire adjacent land, they can't do it. So basically, I mean, the choice is this, or, or the existing house has to remain, or they have a lot they can't develop.
They've also reduced existing non-conformities with the new plan pursuant to the existing ordinance by eliminating encroachments into the building envelope that currently exist. So they basically, they've, I mean, again, the standard of review is, you know, we're looking at the ordinance as it exists and the application as it exists vis-à-vis the ordinance itself, right? So the existing structure on the property is non-conforming in terms of its encroachment into the side yard setbacks. They've eliminated that non-conformity. So this building, were the lot properly sized, would be permitted as a right without an ordinance, without a variance, rather. Because they've eliminated that non-conformity, they're actually, to their point, in balancing, if we were looking at this as a C2, they would be working towards better, you know, being in more conformance with the zone plan. So I think there's no really great, no real gray area here. The standard of our review isn't really to consider the character of the other homes on the block, provided that it actually meets the bulk standards that are articulated in the ordinance. I agree that it's not really great from an energy perspective potentially, it's not really great from an architectural perspective. I hear all that, and I'm extraordinarily sympathetic to that. That is something that can be discussed with the planning board when they're doing the master plan, and with the council when they're rewriting the ordinance. But as it's currently presented, to me, and again, this is my opinion, we would be arbitrary and capricious not to approve this.
Yeah, we have no criteria for design. We have no criteria for adjacent property. We have nothing that allows us to, we have just the standard of trying to eliminate, as you said, nonconformities, and then we have a substandard lot and which is not able to be.
And I totally hear the public and get it, but that's not something that we're really allowed to factor into our review in interpreting the specifics of this particular application in light of the zoning ordinance as it's presented to us.
It's not a factual basis.
I mean, and to the same point, I mean, parking cars in the driveway is outside of the scope of our review as well. I hear you. That also stinks. But, you know, I, that's an enforcement issue, not an approval issue.
Exactly.
Does anyone else have something to say?
I mean, the trouble is, and this has nothing to do with the factuality of the ordinance, is that we're not, we're always presented with something which is, we're often presented with something which is really out of scale with a neighborhood, and that hasn't been turned into anything that has any teeth for us. So that, so that what we're faced with is something that's, that is, maybe it's not as large as it could possibly be, but I'm not sure about that. But we're faced with something that is.
It's pretty close.
Yeah, it's just under two square feet.
And that's a very hard thing to have to swallow, you know, because I think we all understand all, you know, I guess we're still free to vote no, but it's kind of.
But you need a decent reason to vote no.
You need a factual basis.
And that sets the law. A lot development.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we could wish that we weren't presented with, I mean, the truth is, we are being presented with something that is out of scale.
In addition to members of the audience having talked to the council for 10 years, the zoning board has been talking to the council for that period of time and also been ignored. We've waited five years to get the ordinances for the township and the borough combined. We were told they would be. We haven't really even started doing that. So anyhow, we have to make a decision. We need a motion of some sort, which should contain exterior lighting and drainage issues or anything else we wish to put on, which we really can't do.
Well, I would, I would think that the, for the record, the applicant has said he will provide onsite detention or tie to the municipal system, so.
Yeah. So the drainage there is taken care of.
Yeah.
Okay. So we need a motion and a second.
I move to approve.
You moved to approve?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion? We have a second for the motion. Could you call the roll for us, please, Claudia?
Mr. Cohen?
Well, based on my previous comments, notwithstanding that, I'm going to vote yes.
Ms. Coulson? Ms. Coulson?
Did we skip? Coulson, thank you. Okay. We skipped you?
Yeah.
She's not voting, so she's not part of this.
I might be an alternate.
Oh, I see. Yeah. I would like to abstain. Can I do that?
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Begrudging yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yeah.
Let's approve.
So we have one abstention.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I think we'll take a five-minute break before hearing the last case of the evening.
This is the same thing that we've been doing.
This one belongs to a temporary house.
Why is this about?
It opens for the, it's a very important, we don't care.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Only seven of them get to vote, so it gets.
I didn't do it.
I didn't do it.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just was like, I think I felt like I was, I was.
Yeah, I think, I guess somebody was.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Haven't we moved you onto the board or? I don't know. The board is changing. We've got another.
Somebody sat out for one of them, so I was.
Yeah.
Oh, so that made you look more official than you are at this point.
For, I don't remember which case it was, somebody must have sat out because I was.
Yeah, that's right.
I see.
You can always actually concur or disagree. Oh, my goodness. Mr. Tar. My cat is waiting for his supper. Be concise.
Why don't we get started here?
I'm sorry?
Let's get started.
Yes, okay. Are we all ready? Okay. So the last case of the evening is 23 Lee Avenue, and it carries the case number Z1717-552. I'll do what I normally do, get Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memorandum into the record, and then Mr. Tar will take the mic.
And Mr. Bridger, before you begin, I'll note that the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Thank you. The owner is 23 LLC. Marina Rubina is the applicant, and the application is made for side yard setbacks, parking variances, to print expansion of a single-family dwelling and a flat, and a variance for floor area ratio is also requested to permit covering of a two-story open stairway located on the rear elevation of the property. A review by the board is requested to determine if the single-family and flat use have been abandoned. The applicant originally requested a D1 variance to permit the conversion of the single-family and flat into a two-family dwelling. The application was later amended to just seek a use, not seek to use variance to permit the two-family dwelling, but just to go for the flat and the single-family. A little history on this, it's in the R9 zone, subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with section 10B 227, 274. Excuse me. In zoning history, a permit to construct a flat in an existing single-family house was issued in 1973. The ordinance at that time required two parking spaces. However, no parking spaces were provided. It was approved anyway. The flat permit expired in 2012, and it's my interpretation that it's no longer valid as a property is not owner-occupied. It's now owned by a corporation. Parking variances will be required prior to the issuance of a new flat permit, and the existing single-family house will be substantially improved and expanded and the use intensified under the current application. The subject lot is not complying with respect to the required lot area. The requirement's 6,500 square feet. The existing lot is 3,000 square feet. The lot width requirement is 40. The existing is 30. Lot frontage requirement is 40, and the existing is 30. Subject property is not complying with respect to the right-side setback requirement's 5. Existing's 1.2 feet. The combined setback requirement is 15. The existing is 6 feet 9 inches, and parking requirement is 3 spaces, and there's no parking on site. The applicant's proposing to convert the existing one-family, single-family home, which contains a two-bedroom flat into two larger units containing a one-bedroom apartment on the first floor and a second dwelling unit containing three bedrooms located on the second and third floor. An 11 and 1/2 foot by 10 and 1/2 foot addition will be constructed at the rear of the home, which will provide a bedroom on the first, second, and third floors. The attic roof lines and sidewalls will be raised to expand and accommodate the additional living area on the third floor. Two new entrances are proposed at the rear of the property to provide access to the basement and the second floor. Other improvements include air conditioning, condensers, sidewalk, patio, and fencing. Property has been reviewed by the Historic Preservation Review Commission. They did recommend that the open rear stairway be enclosed, and they supported the applicant applying for a floor area variance to accommodate that expansion of the FAR. It's technically a D variance. The applicant need not show that the site can accommodate the, the applicant shall demonstrate that the site can accommodate the problems associated with the increased floor area, not that the site is particularly suited to a more intensive development. You realize we need five affirmative votes for the FAR. There are several bulk reasons our variance is required. Proposed rear yard addition and the raising of the side attic walls by approximately 7 feet violates the required 5-foot setback as followed. The required right yard setback's 5. The proposed will be 4 to the rear addition and the 1.2 feet to the attic expansion on the side yard. The project violates the required 15-foot combined side yard. The raising of the sidewall, attic walls increases the existing degree of noncompliance with regard to the combined setback. The requirement's 15. The proposed will be 6 feet 9. And there's a parking variance. The requirement's 3 spaces. Proposed is none. The plan submitted does comply with the Stormwater Management Plan Ordinance pursuant to section 10B 227, the Princeton Municipal Land Use Ordinance. The plan results in an increase of 398 square feet of net new impervious coverage, whereas a Stormwater Management Ordinance requires a plan whenever the development creates more than 400 square feet of net new impervious. Given the number and nature of the variance requested, the board may want to consider a condition that requires the applicant to provide a Stormwater Management Plan as determined by the, appropriate by the land use engineer. The property does drain. It slopes to the properties at the rear of the house. And the applicant should also consider an alternate location for the waste and recycling containers. They're placed right along the property line next to the adjacent building. And the applicant's requested consideration under the C1 criteria for the bulk variances. That's my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Elizabeth Kim from the Historic Preservation Committee is also here, and she will go over a few points in her memo.
We have questions. Mr. Bridger?
Mr. Bridger, quick question. I only briefly looked at this. In the documents that we received with our taxes, there was a summary of different changes that were going on, and one thing had to do with a granny flat or a granny room. Can you speak to that?
No, I understand. Accessory flats are permitted in both communities. Well, it's one community, both zones. So they're permitted in the former Princeton borough, except in the R4 zone. They require parking space, and there's some other requirements. They're also permitted in this zone, but they require that the owner live at the house.
Live in the house.
In both communities, there's an owner occupancy requirement, so that's, you know, one of the reasons I'm asking you to look at the use of the property.
And to your knowledge, that's not changing based upon the letter that we received with our tax information?
I, I don't think they've even got to that point to discuss, you know, the additional items that were on the list of the Neighborhood Character Study. It has been discussed, but I don't think it's been formalized anything at this point, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Floyd, do you have a question?
Yeah, I had a similar question, so you've answered that as far as owner occupancy, the ordinance that governs flats. When you referenced the existing flat permit expired in 2012, what was the?
I, and I'm sure the applicant can speak more to this. Mr. McQueen was the owner, I believe. He either passed away or became ill and was no longer able to, you know, utilize the house and the flat. That's my understanding.
Okay. Yeah. He did pass away.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So we like the Historic Preservation comments.
Ms. Kim, we need to swear you in. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful? I do. Thank you. First, I want to start by saying that the application came before the commission.
Could you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry. First, I want to start by saying that the application came to the commission as a two condo dwelling, and that's how it was reviewed. That's how the report was written. So as far as the commission is concerned, this is an amended new application, which they have not seen as a single-family with the flat. I'm happy to go over the comments that they had, but the commission felt that it was coming back to them with amended application.
You made a comment about enclosing a rear staircase. That was.
Yes.
Yeah.
So what happened is, there was a vote under the original application, which was two condos, and it was locked. There were six commission members, and it was 3 and 3, so there was no vote passed either way. It was not passed. So in any case, what happened is, they also looked at the second part of the application, which was Historic Preservation Plan, and they commented according to if the zoning board had approved it the way that they had proposed with all their variances, then they commented about if that was the case, they requested that the staircase in the back, for safety reasons, was better to be enclosed, and they supported that, and they understood that was another variance.
Thank you. Mr. Tar?
Just, I'm sorry, a question from Ms. Kim. I'm a little confused. Are you saying you really wanted them to come back?
Yes.
Because you considered an application? Because you considered an application that's different from what's in front of the board?
Yes.
So, you want them to come back?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to understand.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Chris Tar, the attorney for the applicant. Marina Rubina is the applicant. She's here with me. If we could be sworn?
Ms. Rubina, Mr. Tar, if you plan to testify, do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
I do.
Because we're talking about the application, I thought I'd just quickly explain the one-year history of this process. And Marina will tell you passionately and from her point of view that she believes strongly that the duplexes that are allowed in the borough portion of the neighborhood should be, also be permitted in the township portion of the neighborhood. We haven't gotten there yet, but she and her colleagues and friends have written like these folks. They've written to the newspaper. They've gone to the neighborhood, committed a group, tried to persuade folks to allow duplexes. So, the original application was the... Two units are exactly the same, the layouts of the units. The only question was the ownership. If it was a duplex, then two people could own two more affordable, less expensive units. In the flat situation, one person has to own both and live in one and rent the other out. You can live in the little one. You can live in the big one, but the owner has to live in one. And so, we said, okay, she'd prefer to have a duplex, prefer to have two separate ownership, but we'll acquiesce to the recommendation of staff that you probably weren't ready for that to grant a D variance to allow for a duplex in the township, whereas they're allowed the next block over in the borough. So, we said, we'll just amend the application to characterize it as it has been forever, a single-family home with a flat. And I differ with the HPC time and again. In my view, they're supposed to look at the historic character of the house, and if it's two living units, it's two living units. The form of ownership should not be of moment to them. So, we were there. We had a very good meeting. We agreed that the back stairs could be enclosed, and if they supported that, we'd love to come here. They're advisory to you, so you're going to make the decision, and we're ready to move ahead. The primary application is just like all the others, a C variance to allow for the expansion of the structure to an FAR that's conforming by raising the walls above the existing first-floor walls in the two side yards where it encroaches. That's the C variance. It's the primary application. We'll show you drawings and pictures to explain that. The D variance you've heard about. The HPC has recommended that the stairs, which Marina showed as unenclosed, be covered and enclosed. And if we did that, it increases the FAR above the permitted FAR, and you'd have to allow for that. If you don't allow it, we'll go back to the design that we had with the open stairs. Our neighbor's here and very kindly said he supports it. It faces him. He'll speak for himself that he thinks it's safer and better as well. The third piece is this issue about the flat. You'll see proof and you'll hear testimony that the flat existed right up until Mr. McQueen's son was foreclosed upon and had to move out several years ago. He had no intention, in our view, to give up the use of the flat, and the case law suggests that if there's not an intent to abandon a pre-existing nonconformity or a permit that was granted that maybe had some nonconforming characteristics to it, then it should continue. And yes, it's an LLC that proposes to fix the home, but when it's fixed, it is intended to be sold to someone who must live in the one of the units and can rent out the other as a flat. And we just want to continue the variance from the one parking space that's been in place since 1973. We just want the status quo to be continued as to parking. And Mr. Bridger is entitled to have his view. He's paid to have a view about this. His view was when Mr. McQueen's son was evicted and moved out, the flat with no parking space went away. And in my view, that's not the law, but we'll get to that later. So, C variance, a D variance in this parking situation relative to the flat, three parts. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Rubina, who has a slide presentation. If the slide set could be A1, we'll give a set to staff to keep in the records, and I'll turn it over to Marina.
Let me just ask the board a question. Ms. Kim's indicated HPC wants to see the application back again. The board can certainly hear the application, and if you decide you want HPC input, then you can send it back, or I guess you can send it back now without hearing any testimony. Do you have a preference either way of how you'd like to proceed?
I would say we hear it.
It seems probably that we should go ahead and hear what has to be said, and then if adjustments need to be made at the end, we have to consider it that way.
Can I ask a question? May I ask a question?
You said you disagree with age with this particular situation for your interpretation. I'd like to ask if you... Did you agree or approve of what was being done with your family house?
No.
Or did you look at the architectural...
Yes.
...presentation?
Yes.
And did you approve that?
No.
I differ. I differ. I differ.
There was, if you read the memorandum, there is no approval for the two-family condominium.
They're making a recommendation to us about what they think...
Right, so they didn't endorse it?
...preserve the historic value of that. It's only advisory. That's why they don't have to worry about conflict of interest, all those things.
All right, thank you.
But they did feel that changing it from a two-family condo to a single-family, the flat would warrant a different type of construction. That typically, they would think that a flat was something that did not require a big addition. That's why they were interested in seeing it back.
Okay. We understand your point. Mr. Tar?
Sorry. Or maybe just a comment. Because I see the D variance as the first hurdle. You want to switch that to the end and talk about all the other stuff.
Let me make clear. The question on the D variance is whether to cover the stairs. It was a recommendation of HPC. We don't particularly care. We designed it with no covering. And so, we didn't mean to diminish it, but we're of no, have no strong feelings about it.
I'm sorry. I probably, I stated it wrong. I see the issue of whether the flat, the second unit, is legal is the threshold question. Because you're not asking for a new permit for a flat because it's not owner-occupied. You're arguing, or will be arguing at some point down the road that the current, the old permit extends to you even though it's not owner-occupied.
Right. It would extend to an owner when it's been fixed up and sold to someone who will live there, not to an LLC that doesn't live there. Corporations don't live in houses. But they noticed it went out, and the nature of the application is for a parking space. Anybody can go in and have, and ask for a flat in their home if they meet the square footage requirements and so forth in the township. Anybody can do it. What we're missing here is on-site parking. There's no space for cars to park on the property. So, the variance is for in the absence of a parking space to support the flat. And we, our testimony will be that since 1973, there wasn't a parking space, but there was a flat, and we'd like to continue it. Or in the alternative, you could approve it anew if that's how you look at it.
When you say anyone can ask for...
Mr. Floyd, I think what Mr... And I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Tar, but the ordinance allows, this is a permitted use, to have a single-family house with a flat if you meet the ordinance requirements. There aren't many requirements. One is either the flat or the house must be owner-occupied. Two, you must provide parking on-site. Three, there's a formula for the relationship of the size of the flat to the house, depending on the square footage of the house. It can't be more than 40% of the house or 50%, it depends. So, I do think you're right that perhaps the initial issue could be, is it, was it abandoned or not? But I think the point Mr. Tar is making is either way, the applicant, if you don't feel, if you feel it was abandoned and she must come back to you now, she's saying, I am, and I need a parking variance. Because the use I want to make of a single-family house and a flat, that use is allowed, but I can't provide parking on-site. So, she needs that variance. I gather the applicant is making an argument about non-abandonment because essentially, they're trying to hold on to that waiver of the parking requirement that back in '73, as Mr. Bridger indicates, he's not sure why it was waived, but it was. So, the permit was issued. No parking on-site was provided, and it was used as a single-family home and a flat for many years. But now, we find ourselves now, apparently, it's been six years since the flat was used. Yes, it's true. That configuration is there, but the applicant is proposing to change it all. She's going to move the flat to a different floor. She's going to expand everything. So, that's another issue you can take into account, that it is being changed. The configuration of the house is being changed, but essentially, the applicant is saying to you, if you don't believe that my application is similar to what it was before, if you don't believe the use can be essentially grandfathered because in 1973 there was a permit, fine, then I still want to have a single-family home and a flat, but I cannot provide parking. So, I've got to get that variance from the board. I also need variances because I want to expand the house. I'm making everything bigger. So, the abandonment issue, you can consider it now if you want to, or you can hear all the testimony because ultimately, the applicant is still saying to you, whether you believe it was abandoned or not, or if it's still in effect or not, okay, I still need a variance for parking. I can't provide parking on the site. So, that's why they noticed for that. They asked for it. They said, if you don't believe that this permit is still valid, okay, fine, then give me a variance for parking because there's, apparently, the site can accommodate no parking at all. So...
Okay. I have trouble digesting that.
Okay.
It's like, give me a variance for something that you're telling me is not legal.
All right. Let's step back a moment.
Meaning the flat?
Yeah.
Because that's what it's tied to.
It is. But the point is that the ordinance, this use is permitted in that zone. If I owned a single-family home, if I could meet the ordinance standards, I can have a flat. I don't need to come to this board because the use is permitted if I meet the ordinance requirements.
Owner-occupied.
Owner-occupied, parking on-site, and the relationship of the size of the flat to the building. So, the applicant is making some alternative arguments to you tonight. First, she's saying permit was issued in 1973 for a single-family home and a flat, and the permit actually did say one parking space must be provided, but it, you know, town overlooked it. And so, for many years, that's how it was used. Then for six years, it wasn't used at all. The applicant bought the property. She'd like to have a single-family home and a flat. She wants to change, though, the configuration of the flat, the size, its location, the building, et cetera. She still can't provide parking on-site. So, whether the board concludes that that old permit, it's not applicable anymore because you're changing the entire layout here, or whether you agree with Mr. Bridger that it was abandoned, that it wasn't used for six years, and that it's no longer valid. The applicant is saying, that's fine. Then I'm going to present an argument to you that please give me a variance for parking. I'm going to have a single-family home. I'm going to have a single-family home, I want to have a flat, I can meet the other requirements, but I can't meet the parking standard. So, please give me the variance." In addition to the other variances that she needs for setback, and, uh, I guess depending on the HPC recommendation, this enclosure of the stairs triggers the FAR.
And just one more question for my edification, is the flat law, if it requires one parking space that we're looking for the waiver for, regardless of how many bedrooms, because they're increasing the bedrooms.
I know.
So, what does the code say on that?
Doesn't the, doesn't the on-site flat limited to one bedroom, to three, to two rooms?
No, it's limited to a percentage of the floor area of the-
But it doesn't talk about-
No, that's a borough rule. No, that's the township.
But township, it's not limited in the federals.
It's limited, right, I'm sorry, I thought it said floor area.
It's a percentage of the, of the, of the home area.
Or is the-
So-
The analysis-
I really want an answer from them.
It's on the cover sheet.
I want an answer from them.
Street, excuse me, off-street parking, this is in section ten B two seventy-four three D. Off-street parking shall be provided as required by section ten B two eighty-two, which is the parking standard, and this always causes me consternation. One parking space shall be required for each two-thirds dwelling unit, for units containing one or few bedrooms, and half a dwelling unit for units containing two or more bedrooms. So, basically, for anything more than one bedroom, you need two spaces, and then one space for the, the one-bedroom flat. So, that's three spaces that... In this case.
So, the flat is currently structured by Mr. McQueen, who acquired one, had one bedroom.
Well, he had, it was a similar situation, I think. He had one-bedroom flat, I, I, I forget what it's, one or two bedrooms. He, he required three spaces, is my, my take, and for some reason, it was never done when he applied for the permit, so...
We ready?
I think we should go ahead and hear what you have in mind, and then we can put all of these comments into our thinking process.
Great. Thank you so much for taking this on and hearing this application.
Use the portable microphone, perhaps, I can't hear when you-
Can you hear me now?
Right into it, right straight into it.
Use the portable one.
Um, this would be easier if everybody could hear me this way.
I can't hear you.
No?
There's a portable microphone, and if you speak into that, you're much more audible.
There we go. Okay, thank you so much for taking this on, sorry it's so late. Okay, so here you see the picture of the, uh, sorry, existing house and the 3D model of the proposed remodel. Uh, my name is Marina Rabina, I'm an architect, I live on Quarry Street, um, in the same neighborhood, and, um, some of you know my work in town, my office is on Nassau Street, and most of my work is here. Just to get you oriented, this is, um-
Ms. Rabina? And just for the board, uh, just so they understand, you are the owner of the LLC, right?
I'm the managing-
And the applicant.
Member. Right, I'm not the only owner, yes, correct. And, um, the property is located as an R nine district in the township, right a block away from the border between the township and the borough. Um, as we've sort of been discussing here, the big question for me about this, um, when I looked at the, buying this building, it's a, it's an existing two-unit building, uh, which is done under the flat ordinance where we don't know which one was rented out and which one was the main unit, but the first floor is a one fam, a one-bedroom unit, and the second floor is a two-bedroom unit, and when you go there, there are two mailboxes, two meters, two kitchens, two everything. So, for me, this was very interesting because I strongly believe that this town is experiencing an affordable housing crisis, in the sense that we're really short on what's called in our town's own consultant's report, missing middle housing, where there's a lot of housing, which is really expensive and only really well-off people can afford. We are in the process of figuring out where we're going to be building our affordable housing, based on co-re requirements, but what we're really missing, in my personal opinion, is starter homes for younger families, and places where seniors could downsize, retire, live in walking distance to town. And I thought, what a wonderful opportunity to be actually trying this out. This is already two units, here we are, it wouldn't look any different, it wouldn't feel any different, it wouldn't have anything different, except for, instead of having one owner, be living in one place and renting the other one, it would be two owners living in the same building. To me, how bad could that possibly be? I was advised not to put that forward, because as, um, was discussed earlier, the council is in the middle of neighborhood character study, where apparently in phase two, this is exactly what they're going to be discussing. As I think somebody asked, the granny flats, this is exactly supposed to be coming up for discussion in August, so I was advised to table that discussion, say, "Okay, too early, let's not push that yet, um, let's try. This is already an existing house in a flat, and it's an existing allowed use, let's continue with that, and if the council decides that maybe we could do duplexes, great. If not, this can continue being a single-family house with a flat, no problem." So, um, here is a map, a little bit zoomed in, you could see all of the properties, and this is exactly what Mr. Bridger was explaining, that all of these properties are thirty by a hundred, even though the minimum lot requirement, I think it's like sixty-five by a hundred, right, something like that, so this, they're all significantly smaller than they're supposed to be, which puts all of the zoning requirements effectively at odds with the existing fabric of the neighborhood. You could see this house is a perfect example, um, where the red line indicates the zoning setbacks, and this is the existing house, front porch, existing house, back porch, you know, both sides, as you could see, that whole thing is non-compliant. So, when I looked at this, um, I said, "Okay, we're going to do an addition that's completely zoning compliant, fits all the zoning requirements, complies with all the bore-bulk regulations." What I would like to do is I would like to continue the one-bedroom on the first floor, which I think would be perfect for a senior. So, I've designed a unit, there'd be a bedroom in the back, and everything's on the same level, the senior has access from the front porch, you know, what could be better, you could sit on the porch and, just a perfect space for it. And then, what that, um, and then the second unit would be accessed from the back, you would walk down the side, and you would go up an open staircase, up to the second floor. And then, the, um, the unit on the second floor and in the attic would be a, um, three-bedroom unit, and in order to accommodate that, there will be a dormer, as you could see right here, peeking out. So, whoops. So, this is what I originally presented to Historic Preservation, and Historic Preservation rejected that, and said that, um, placing that dormer in a way that's visible from the street is not acceptable to them, and they recommended that all of the additions would be pushed towards the back, set back significantly, so they wouldn't be visible from the street. And at that point, we said, "Well, this requires then a zoning variance." And they said, "That's fine, we'll come and support the zoning variance for..." And they suggested a design of a cross gable, instead of maintaining the gable of the existing house going this way with addition on both sides, like you see, going this way towards the back of the house. So, this was the second time when I went to Historic Preservation and presented this design, you could see that the addition is not changing, however, all of this habitable space in the attic is shifted towards the rear of the property, and these portions that are over the existing building below is what's triggering the C variance. So, the inside is the same, the first floor is one-bedroom unit, the second floor and attic are doing the same thing as they were in the, in the way that they were functioning as the zoning compliant version, but this was done in order to reflect the comments made at the Historic Preservation Commission. So, this was the second time, and the Historic Preservation Commission said, "Well, yes, we have other comments about windows and materials and, um, landscaping, so as part of your packet, I have submitted a letter, um, both to Historic Preservation and you guys, which goes through all of the comments that they provided, and said, 'We've modified this, we've modified that, we've addressed all of your concerns about the windows and the materials, and we agree with all of that.'" One thing that they additionally required was the enclosing of the stair. And this, I agree, that definitely having an enclosed stair is safer, however, that increases the area of the house, making it therefore, um, requiring now an FAR variance. So, whether you guys agree with Historic Preservation that enclosing the stair is safer, and therefore, that warrants the variance, or whether the stair should remain open and not require D variance, that's up to you guys to decide, we're fine both ways. Just to give you a picture of what I'm talking about, um, so in order to enclose the stair, this is the cross gable, um, so this was after the first review of the Historic Preservation, um, this was presented at the second review of the Historic Preservation, they said they don't want the sloping roof, they would like it to be vertical, this is one of the responses to the comments, and then they would like to not see the open stair, but they would like to have an enclosed stair. I have also met with my neighbor, and, um, on that side of the house, and discussed whether he would prefer the open stair and the closed stair, and he said that he would prefer the closed stair because it improves the privacy of his property, so that people are not looking to him, and it's more of a solid wall. Then, this is, um, to show you the existing condition of the home, and it's not that this was left by choice, the gentleman who lived there was a victim for non-payment of taxes, um, is it called, the tax certificate was sold to a financial institution that held on to it for several years by doing some legal things, I don't know. The LLC that I am a part of has purchased this house over a year ago, and it's, again, not by choice that this building has been opened, it's just being, working through all of the proper procedures. So, you could see there, oh, my goodness, sorry, so there are, um, two kitchens, two mailboxes, two meters, that's how this house worked since nineteen-seventy-three. So, this picture here is the permit, and this is where I don't really know how to discuss this abandonment issue, I will have Chris discuss that.
Very quickly, we talked about it before, the Cox treatise that you've seen in connection with your coursework for, to, to be zoning board members, the, the, we looked to the treatise on New Jersey zoning, and Mr. Cox had a, a section on the abandonment of, of a, of a use, and to just quote one sentence, "A mere non-use of a non-conforming right does not constitute abandonment. Abandonment occurs when the concurrence of two factors. One, some overt act or failure to act, which, by implication, the owner no longer retains an interest in the right, and secondly, an intention to abandon." So, our, our point is that in order for the flat with no parking space to have gone away, Mr. McQueen had to intend for it to go away, and, uh, he, sadly, uh, couldn't pay his taxes, and somebody bought the tax sale certificates, and he had to leave. But, uh, the testimony will be that till the day he left, he had a tenant in, in the flat, and would have intended to stay there and keep the tenant there, but he wasn't allowed to. That's the, the issue about this document.
So, um, here in this slide, you could see sort of a zoom-in of the neighborhood and color coding, um, just to sort of, we're all kind of stressed and worried about this, I just wanted to say that this is an amazing vibrant location and neighborhood. Lee Avenue has restaurants, has, you know, duplexes, has homes with flats, has single-family homes, it has a daycare, it has, next door to this particular house, it has a beauty salon, you could see right here, so it's a really wonderful place to live, to be, it's a walkable, amazing place. So, I think that it's really important to notice that, um, a house with a flat is by no means going to stand out as something special over, over here. If you count all the units that are in this immediate vicinity, more than half of them are in some form of multi-unit function, they're either part of a multi-unit, du, you know, duplex or condo or rental of two things, so it's not something that's just going to be one-off first thing that happened on the street. Let's see, so this next picture refers to the parking calculation that we were just discussing, so this is, um, I think this is exactly the same thing as Derek just concluded, that for one, um, bedroom, you're required to have one and a half parking spaces, and that remains the same, and everything over two bedrooms requires two parking spaces, so that will remain the same. The current upper unit is two bedrooms, and it will be a three-bedroom unit. I personally live, um, a little bit up, what would that be, south of this place, and we are the family of four, have one car. Also, I think that, I am really hoping that that first floor is going to be for a senior, and as you could see, this is my kind of neighborhood walkability score that one could download online. I think this is a perfect senior unit, where a senior could walk to everything, there's, you know, restaurants, shops, everything within walking distance, so hopefully that senior won't even need a car at all.
So, to be-
But no handicapped entrance. But no handicapped entrance.
Um, no handicapped entrance, although that may not be a bad thing, but, um, all the bathroom, as you could see, a little bit oversized, there's a shower with no curb, it's a relatively larger bedroom to turn around, so everything's been designed with, I would call it aging-in-place friendly, is what I would call it, um, so my hope that this is perfect for a senior with no car.
And I don't want to confuse it further, but if there is no flat, if, if it wasn't, if you say it was abandoned and you don't permit it, then it's a single-family house which would have required two parking spaces, and it's pre-existing and non-conforming as a single-family house. So, we're not talking about those two spaces, I just want to be clear about that. We're just talking about the one space for the flat, because every house on the street pre-existed the zoning code, and doesn't have any, anybody who doesn't have a driveway where they can park is grandfathered, as to the absence or the failure to have parking spaces for the single-family home.
So, again, it's been a long night and a lot of confusing information, so hopefully this is going to summarize this. So, the C variance is for the side yard encroachments, you remember the two side yards, we're not making anything worse, we're making it the same as it was, and this is mostly because, um, the Historic Preservation Commission, as you could see now, we don't have any dormers that are visible from the street, everything has been shifted back towards the back of the house. Then the D variance, this is again optional, whether we enclose this door and stair in the back or not enclosed, I think that, yes, indeed, it is safer, but, um, does that warrant a D variance? It's up to you guys to decide. Oh, my goodness, sorry. No, went away. So, the house with the flat, um, is a permitted use in this neighborhood, um, the original owner received somehow the parking variance, we really, there's absolutely no way we could provide parking on the street, um, so that one parking space needs a variance. So, as a conclusion, again, thank you for hearing it. I strongly believe that we should try to make housing more affordable in this town by doing exactly this. Hopefully, the council will be taking this on, but, um, hopefully you could consider, thank you.
I have a question and a comment. Comment is that that's a terrific presentation, and I congratulate you on your visual presentation of both what is there and what should be there, but I, it's a terrific presentation. Now, I don't live down there, and I don't know anything about the street in terms of traffic and parking, but I'm curious, is parking a problem?
Yes, there's no denial that it's difficult to find parking on that street, yeah, I mean, I could be telling you otherwise, but, um, especially because of the restaurant, I think that there's an inflow of people, especially at dinnertime, would you say, right, um, that people come to the restaurant. I, I mean, local Greek is a huge success, nobody's going to argue with that, it's in the same block, um, so we have neighbors who live on that same street, uh, across the street, and they will probably say that, yes, I'm sure people don't park in front of their house. However, again, I think that this was supposed to have three parking spaces, and will be the same thing, it's not changing in a way, I mean, yes, it's been not occupied, so that's been kind of useful, but we can't keep properties empty, right? So, I think that, um, again, in the hope that the senior on the first floor wouldn't be driving at all, hopefully that will alleviate the issue, and then again, I'm, you know, with our, hopefully, bike lanes, as we were almost approving them on Monday at the council meeting, that this is so close to the school, that this is perfect for starter family, you know, there's a daycare on the same street, and, you know, two blocks away, how could be a little, you know, no, it's completely walkable.
Thank you.
You said, you're, you hope down the road, you'll sell it to a, someone that'll be an owner-occupant? Is that right?
Well, I, um, Michael and I live across the street from each other, so I am not moving there yet, maybe I will, um, but when this is, right now, it's not possible to live there, there's like stairs are missing, there's a hole in the roof, it's not really possible to live there. So, when this whole thing is said and done, hopefully there will be one owner that will have, you know, either it's going to be their grandma who's going to live on the first floor, or they're going to own the building and rent the second unit, I don't know.
So, as Ms. Casey informed us, the ordinance requires that the owner live in one of the units, the little unit, the big unit, doesn't matter. So, if you're concerned at all about it, you could condition this, it should be clear that she intends to fix it up and sell it to somebody who would live there and rent it out, but if it's not clear, there's a concern, by all means, we could condition the, any approval that you might grant with that. It, it must be owned by a person who lives there, that's the intention of the flat ordinance, as we understand it.
Yeah, I mean, the flat is not, uh, doesn't really exist unless there's an owner in one part of the property, and then the flat becomes an allowed event.
But it doesn't become an allowed event without the variance for the third parking space.
The parking space is another issue.
So, that's really the gating issue, so if the board were to deny that variance for the additional parking space, presumably you wouldn't do any of this.
Well, then we're going to go back to a million-dollar single-family home on Lee Avenue, yeah.
Okay.
That's what we're looking for.
It would be effectively a redesign.
Yeah, for the fourth time, yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, part of your presentation is the affordability aspect, um, and affordability is relative, so I, I was wondering what your price point's going to be, I mean, affordable at somebody buying that house for seven-hundred thousand dollars?
Right, unfortunately, w- once this house is completely remodeled, let's assume it's a single-family home, um, doing the analysis, it is not going to be a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar home, it's going to be pushing a million dollars.
As I recall, the comments about affordability were, uh, this preference owner parked to have two separate units, it could be sold to two folks, that was the essence of that.
And that's what I was really asking about, even, even if you sold it with the flat.
Mm-hmm.
You know, given you paid for it, what you paid for it, um, and, and the rehab costs.
Right.
You're gonna, you're gonna sell it, I would guess, in worth of six-hundred thousand, close to seven?
Well, I, again, I would-
Is that affordable?
Well, I think that, um, given that new homes in this town are being sold for one-point-four million dollars, I mean, the house that we looked at before, the previous analysis, it's going to be done, they're going to sell it for one-point-four million dollars. This is- This is probably not a good discussion, but I strongly believe that there have to be other options in this town where, you know, a senior could buy a one-bedroom apartment close to town and walk somewhere, and the starter family could buy a three-bedroom small place. Like the gentleman was saying, I hate to, you know, point back to them, but yes, this house, if it's all one big single-family house, it's going to eat up a lot of energy. But in my personal opinion and professional opinion, if you have two families living there, they're going to be taking up the same amount of energy, but you have two families, and it's more environmentally friendly and more affordable. Again, I would love this to be sold separately, so there would be something one could buy, but that's not an application. But I'm not allowed to even ask for that, right? I would love to. If you guys say, okay, we'd love it, come back with the duplex idea, absolutely, be back here next time with the proper notices. No question about it. I would love to do it, but it sounds like it's just a little bit ahead of its time, and hopefully the council will catch up.
So the, it seems to me the D variance is needed for the enclosed stairs, and that, from my viewpoint, certainly improves the geometry of the property. I went there on a Sunday morning, and there's clearly no parking available on the street because essentially every place until almost the end of the road was full. But I, I, when I went there, I didn't think about how far the new staircase is going to extend into the backyard space. It's what, about four feet more than the existing staircase?
Well, we don't, there must have been a staircase from the rear porch, but it has been gone for some time.
So the addition would be there, whatever you...
So this is if we do not enclose the stair, right? So this, this situation here is, here's an addition, and then the stair...
So that goes out about an additional porch width?
Right. And then if we, if we enclose the stair...
I'm just trying to think of what the other backs of the houses look like. So you're not going to stick out terribly beyond what is built already?
Right. And you could see that, oh, my goodness, sorry. Right. So you could see in this view that if we leave the stair open, the way, the only way the configuration works with accommodating the basement stair is...
Although we're not allowed to talk about aesthetics, I think the D variance is adequate.
Right, right. I mean, nobody's arguing that it's better. It just requires a D variance, unfortunately. It's the only downside. You know, everybody would be happy with that, but if you don't feel comfortable granting a D variance, that's okay. There's a way out.
Now, there's a hedge going along the south, no, the west side.
West side, right.
That's on your property.
Correct.
So that will come down, presumably?
There will be landscaping continuing, right?
You'll put landscaping or a fence between the two properties?
Well, there's a fence now. There will be a new fence, but there will also be landscaping, and we have to submit a landscaping plan, and it's part of your package.
It just seems to me that the access to the back door on the ground is fairly difficult.
In the, yes, in this, the D variance, it's extremely much better. There's no question about it, right? It's sooner it's enclosed, you're, you know, you're out of the rain sooner, there's no question.
Yeah. I'm skeptical about there being much space for landscaping along that piece of property. I mean, it's nice to say.
Well, small landscaping.
The occasional dazing.
It's some sort of shade-loving plant, right?
Mr. Virgert, you've taken the position that the flat use, I'm still hung up on the flat use, just because I think ultimately what we will need to do is if we stipulate, if we come to the conclusion that the flat use wasn't abandoned, then we don't need to tackle the variance for the additional parking space. Is that accurate? That's not accurate.
Well, I mean, it was, there was never a variance granted. It was a mistake, in my opinion.
Okay, so we need to address that either way.
I would grant them the variance. If you're inclined to grant them the flat, then, you know, grant the variance.
So I mean, I guess what we've also said is that it must be an owner-occupied property, and then the flat, whichever you want to call the flat, becomes an allowed thing. And we don't have to worry about putting duplexes on the imaginary township side of the road.
She'd love it.
Not yet, right. Hopefully, council will act on that, but...
The drainage issue is one you haven't addressed. The property definitely slopes down onto the properties behind, which are of a similar dimension almost. And it seems to me you've increased the roof area, you're going to get increased runoff from the downspouts, you're going to have to do something about water retention or directing it out. I don't know whether there's a sewer in the sand...
If you, with your stair enclosure, doesn't the, you go over the 400 square feet?
Because the existing FARs...
No, no, we, it's a good point. At the moment, there's a threshold. Everything under 400 square foot new, impervious coverage does not trigger stormwater management. So I was really careful not to go over that limit. However, if you guys were to say, look, it would be really great to do the stormwater management, I'm perfectly happy to do it. At the moment, you know, I've been trying to understand what even if I'm allowed to do, not allowed to do completely. So if we say, great, this is allowed to do, please hire a civil engineer and do your storm...
The ordinance only says you don't have to.
Right.
The zoning board is saying you must pay attention.
In the prior application, I think there was a choice, either you tie into the municipal pipes or you have underground storage.
Some attention, yes. Is there a storm sewer available in the room?
Uh, I don't think there's...
I would, if she's inclined to provide stormwater, there's some other methods that, I don't think you need to tie it into the stormwater system, but the property slopes to the back, and it's a legitimate concern. You could put in some rain gardens back there or ways to capture water, not necessarily a structured system on this small site like this, but the concern from the engineer when he looked at it was, it does slope to the back, and that water's going to go back that way. You are adding impervious...
Yeah, there's a slight slope on that.
Yeah.
I mean, if she's, if that's a condition, I think something could be worked out with the land use engineer, not necessarily a rain garden, I mean, maybe a rain garden or swells.
Well, I think that if we have, absolutely, we would love to do it. Tying into stormwater management, storm sewer is actually kind of the least environmentally-friendly way to go, right? Because what we're trying to do is when there's a big rainstorm, we're trying to have everybody hold their water on their property. I think you were required to listen to that thing I was required to listen there to. So what we have to do is we have to accommodate, to hold the water, and have it slowly seep through, right? So we'd be happy to do it if that's the general direction. I personally, at this point, having been in limbo for this long, didn't feel that, you know, I could invest the money and try to investigate that, but be happy to do it as part of the process.
The other silly technical issue is associated with trash disposal, recycling and trash and so on.
Yeah, so there was discussion on which side the trash would be, on the this-house side or on the property line side. Again, I'm open in whichever way you think is better. The way I have it right now, I thought was better because it allows, if we shift the walking towards the property line, and then the trash towards the house, then it pushes the landscape towards the house. So then you're watering the landscape right under your house, and you're watering your basement, which is kind of not the best thing to be doing. You want to be having a hard surface sloped away from the house, and then the landscaping away so that you're not watering right under your foundation. Either way, we could waterproof it either way. If you say flip it to the other side, no problem.
The trash will just float out to the...
Hope not.
Are there members of the audience wishing to address this case? Yes, so if you would care to come forward, you can borrow the microphone, and you have to identify your...
This is on. I could speak from here.
Swear to be truthful and say what you...
Yes, my name is Wallace Best. I live at number 25 Lee Avenue, which is right next door.
And sir, any testimony you give this evening, you swear will be truthful?
It will be truthful, yes. First, I want to thank the board and the Historic Preservation Commission for their hard work. My brother always told me that real estate is emotional, and so I know that emotions are running high about all things having to do with our lovely neighborhood. But I just want to make just a few comments. I couldn't help but think as a historian about all of this. I'm a historian, an urban historian, as it were. And I think part of my concern here is that sometimes we think of neighborhoods in the abstract, but neighborhoods are real and made up of individual houses, and all of which impact the neighborhood in one way or the other. So as individual houses go, so goes the neighborhood. So I'm thinking of this project in terms of the well-being of the neighborhood, because we've seen some very lovely pictures of number 23, but it doesn't look like that right now. There's currently a tree growing through the porch. So I think this would be, and I know we're not really concerned about aesthetics, but as the direct neighbor, I'm concerned about aesthetics. I think this would be a welcome improvement on the property that has been in this neighborhood for decades. And so, you know, there were some questions about, did I make the right decision by moving into a neighborhood that became a historic neighborhood? And I thought, I love being in a historic neighborhood. I think this is really, really wonderful. I think I got really, really lucky by getting number 25. But as, you know, but historic neighborhoods, I think are meant to honor the past, but, you know, but any change in a neighborhood doesn't necessarily dishonor the past. And I think, from what I understand from this, this seems to honor the past but also bring some necessary improvements. I think this is going to be beautiful. And so as the person that will be most directly affected by what goes on in number 23, I want to stand in support of this, because anything to get that tree from growing out of that porch, from that porch, would be an improvement. Again, I know there are a lot of things to consider, but my only request, my only request, if I could make one, because I think the owners of a house should be able to do, within reason, what they'd like to do, that must be, those stairs must be covered, because that, I spend a lot of time in my cute little yard in the back, you know, grilling and that kind of thing. And I think the person in 23 who has that upper level should be able to go in and out of their unit without me back there, you know, noticing them going in and out. And I think aesthetically, I just think it would just be nicer. It'd be more privacy for them and more privacy for me. So thank you for hearing me. Again, I know there are a lot of things to consider, but as the person perhaps most directly affected, I want to stand in support of this refurbishment of this house, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, you can ask me a question.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd just like to ask Dr. Best to confirm that he lived next door when the junior, Mr. McQueen, was removed from the house. And does he recall that Mr. McQueen was there and there was a renter renting the flat?
Yes, that was the situation. Earl McQueen, who I miss dearly, my wonderful neighbor, lived on the bottom unit, and his renter lived in the top unit. They're both wonderful people. I miss them dearly. But that's how that house had been for many years, I think, with a renter in the top unit, and Earl lived in the bottom unit.
Good evening. Tony DiMeglio, I live in Princeton, New Jersey. I'm a broker with Callaway Henderson-Sutterby's.
Mr. DiMeglio, do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to consider myself very lucky to have sold this property to Marina, whose enthusiasm about the neighborhood, about what she was planning to do, possibly making this a two-unit endeavor, was exciting. We live in a town where the average home price is over $1 million. It's the highest it's ever been. For those that know and don't know, in the town of Princeton, currently there are 36 homes on the market at $2 million and above. So there's a very, very serious dynamic change in what's happening in the real estate in our town. It's very important what Marina is doing in terms of making this, yes, affordable, affordable in terms of a $500,000 property that somebody can move into, move in, have their children go to our school system. The neighborhood that this house exists in is the perfect place for two people, young people coming in that want to live here, people like myself that live on Wynette Road, big house, six children, thank God, they've all about moved out. And I want to live in town. I want to walk to town. I don't need $3,000. I don't need $4,000. I don't need a Bosque house that looks like everybody else. But I think this is an important juncture for zoning, because I think it's time, we have to think out of the box a little bit. I know there are rules, but where Marina is taking this property and where Marina is going is the future of what this town needs, and I think we all have got to go at her and stand behind her. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes? Please?
My name is Galloway Robinson. I live across the street from 23 Lee's on 26 and a half Lee Avenue.
And ma'am, do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, truthful.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm really happy that Marina take this project, and I think it's a great project. I'd like to see our street with the beautiful, healthy houses, if it's possible, new, because new houses, more healthy and beautiful. So I, so I like this project very much. So thank you, Marina, for doing this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who needs to make a comment on this case?
Good evening. My name is Shirley Satterfield. I live at 30 Quarry Street, right next to Marina.
And ma'am, do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
It's truthful.
Thank you.
I just want to give you a little history, because when she talked about all the stores that are on the street, and the fact that it's a nice place to live, and the nursery school is there, that was all a necessity for those of us who had generations of family here. So, and the houses were nice houses before landlords got a hold of them. So this isn't the first time that these houses would look good. The stores that are on Lee Avenue are there because it was necessity, because we couldn't go to stores on Nassau Street. So we had the grocery store where the Greek restaurant is. We had a grocery store where the Mexican restaurant is. And the other stores were candy stores and restaurants. So all of this was a necessity, and we walked. We didn't have cars, unless there were cars to go to work. We didn't have cars unless there were cars to go to work for those people in other parts of Princeton. I don't, I'm not opposed to the house being built. What I'm opposed to is that it's double house, because it was a single house, and our families would have families that came from the South that would live there. That's why more people lived upstairs. If it's affordable, it's not going to be affordable for those of us who want to come back to Princeton. We have generations of families who would like to come back and live in these houses. They can't do it anymore because they can't afford it. So if this house was going to be affordable, I'd like to see someone who lived in Princeton, who has generations of families, to come back and live in that house. Thank you.
Kip Cherry, 24 Dempsey.
Ms. Cherry, do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm very concerned about this as a precedent for the neighborhood. I'm very concerned about the character of the neighborhood, which is single-family houses. That's not to say flats, flats are what they are. But my concern is that we're changing the character of this neighborhood if we allow two-family units to be in this house that avoids the flat requirements. My concern also is that the bulk created in the proposal is not in keeping with the historic character of the neighborhood. Changes of the east-west and north elevations all add considerable bulk to this house and greatly change the original design and also how it is associated with the very tight spaces in which it rests. The non-conforming lot setbacks already are in non-compliance with the combined left and right 15-foot setback. By raising the sidewalls, the degree of non-compliance has increased. The owner says that if the top unit isn't feasible, that the unit, that the house will remain as a single-family house, which actually would be in keeping with the neighborhood and with the R9 zone, which is now the current zone for that neighborhood, which doesn't permit two-family houses. The owner argues that the insertion of a new unit will help with affordability, and we're all very concerned about that, and I'm involved in a project on Lidle Street that involves affordable housing. But in that case, the affordable housing has legal restrictions to it. That is, we know it will be an affordable unit. In this case, it's just the opine of the owner that this will be an affordable unit. There's no legal restriction, there are no deed restrictions, and I think that we should avoid looking at the pretty picture in terms of the fact that we all are concerned about affordability. Who knows who will live in this unit? Also, I think that giving a variance for parking is a real problem, because everybody has a car and the car has to go somewhere. So I think you're really changing the face of the very crowded neighborhood by allowing this sort of thing to go forward as it has been proposed.
Thank you.
Could I do a quick reminder about the neighborhood, about the character of the neighborhood, as it were?
Come to the microphone again.
The neighborhood, as it, the neighborhood as it stands has plenty of duplexes in it. And the house in yellow right next to it with the beauty parlor is effectively a two-family unit. There's an apartment upstairs from the beauty parlor, which has been there, I think, for decades. And so essentially, number 23 and number 21 are the same design and have been for decades, with a unit on top and a unit on the bottom. So, and there are any number of duplexes throughout. So not every home in the neighborhood is a single-family. There are duplexes, and there is right in that space, 23 and 21, the example of the same type of structure. So, again, I'm an urban historian, so I'm concerned about these things, but I think that's a little mischaracterization of what actually happens in the neighborhood. There's a unit right next to it, which is essentially the same design.
One more person.
I just want to clarify something, because it's a R9 neighborhood, a R9 zone, and that doesn't allow duplexes. Isn't that correct at this moment?
We're not talking about a duplex in this case.
Okay, two-family.
My name is Yaina Moore. I live at 19 Green Street.
Ms. Moore, do you swear or affirm any testimony you give will be truthful?
I certainly do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm speaking as a neighbor within the neighborhood, the Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood, not just Lee Avenue, and as president of the Witherspoon-Jackson Development Corporation. And our mission is to preserve, restore, and sustain the neighborhood's character, its diversity, and its quality of life. Now, zoning may focus on a physical configuration and perhaps some technical matters around its, the attributes. But zoning also touches on areas of what has been described as affordability. And I think initially, when this project was presented as a two-family, it was really more suitable and perhaps attractive for investor-type of ownership, which is something that we certainly are not trying to encourage. There certainly is validity in keeping the single-family with a flat configuration, requiring that the owner-occupant is in residence and is renting the flat out. However, there is nothing in this application or your processes that really can enforce affordability. It's just being relied upon based on the developers' assertions or desires. But we have not heard, although Mr. Floyd threw out numbers, we have not heard the applicants really making a commitment towards what the house price, sale price might be. It's not being put under COA. There is no, while there's certainly a colorful description of a proposed elderly woman as a tenant, there is no rent level that's being stated for that tenant. So there's nothing but the location, which offers buildings that may be added on to, as has been suggested, to make larger for purposes of greater marketability to those who are going to have to pay more to live in these structures. So, Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood is not a historic neighborhood for its aesthetics. And so if we measure everything on something looking better, there would be a lot of changes, and there would be a lot of people who would not be able to live there because they can't afford to keep up the appearances. It's an historic neighborhood born out of its resident population and one that has transitioned over time. But for those who were relegated to it, they are still trying to hold on, Mr. Professor Best. I'm skeptical when developers say, without a mandate, as Ms. Cherry pointed out, or a developer's agreement, that by virtue of a change in use or an increased density or multi-family duplex, any way you want to call it, that inherently something becomes more affordable. It certainly can become more profitable. So I want to know, so this, not to be swayed by claims of affordability, what the zoning board really is looking towards in making this judgment that would indeed be supportive of a neighborhood that is in strife as far as those who try to continue to live there affordably and needs, in many ways, zoning to support it. Single-family, flat, owner occupancy is very important, both by the housing type and the way in which tenure is established in the neighborhood for the stability of the neighborhood. So your decision is very important beyond just either aesthetic or the technical pieces of setback and the like, and even parking. It really is more important to the neighborhood in terms of its long-term life for its current residents, not just for starter homes for other people. Thank you.
Tony DiMeglio, my last comment. Yes, in terms of affordability, it's a price point that's needed. So you know, also, all I can say is that real estate is a moment in time. When this house goes on to market, will determine what it should be priced at. But if you're looking at it in terms of a COA unit, this is not even what the discussion is about. One of the other things you should know about real estate is the fact that currently in this neighborhood, there are six houses for sale in the neighborhood that would sell within 30 days. And one of the reasons is exactly what's going on Marina. Most people who are going to buy these houses, fix them up, either live in them or sell them, have no idea what's going to happen with zoning. So I think it's an issue that needs to be addressed, and Marina's solution is the way it should go. Thank you.
So we could, we could wrap up. We could...
Yes, I would like...
We could sum up. I've left the slide up on the screen as a reminder to you of the relief that's being requested. It's now over a year ago. I think when you saw that dormer that Marina had designed coming out the side, which would have allowed for a totally conforming application with no C variants, she's just too nice. The HPC said they didn't like it, so she redesigned the house and spent a year going back through the process and put the bulk in the back of the home, because that's what the commission wanted. The variance for bulk is brought about by her acquiescence to their preference as to not having dormers at the side. That's what the C variance is for. Typical side yard, upward movement of the walls, which aren't moving out but up. The D variance, you've heard about, the one kind thing HPC did was to say, why don't you cover the stairs, as did Dr. Best, the neighbor with whom Marina's been working. He'd like them not to be looking into his yard. He'd like for them to have a safe access. And safety is one of the purposes of zoning, and therefore would justify a D variance if you were inclined to give it. We've talked a lot about the flat. I frankly didn't hear anybody say that a single-family house with a flat wouldn't be a good idea. Obviously, if you bought this home and you rented out rooms, you could take the smaller portion and rent out the larger portion, and the rent that folks paid you will allow you to pay your mortgage. So somebody could afford to live here much more readily if there was a flat in it that they could rent out for income. So that creates affordability. Marina has a wonderful idea that there ought to be two folks who own their own homes, but we're not just there yet on this street. So that's the application that's before you. It's got a little complicated here and there. But it's for a C variance to allow for the sides, the D to allow for the stairs to be covered, and a further C variance to allow for the continued use of the house with a flat, but no parking for any of the units. And we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chairman Royce, if it's possible for me to add a few additional information for the board to consider before you deliberate to executive review?
I suppose so.
Thank you.
What do you want to say?
Just to clarify some of the things that were presented by the applicant. The applicant did come in for a concept review. There was the...
I have a job hearing you. Could you...
I'm sorry. Is this...
Do we have another microphone? Mr. Bridger has one.
Hello?
That's best.
Thank you. The applicant did come before HPC for their concept review, as was represented. They were not happy with the visibility of the addition of the roof for them to acquire the additional square footage. So they did ask for it to be pushed back, which, when the applicant came in for their final hard design, it was done, but in addition with that, there was the addition put on in the back. Now, if you looked at the text map that was presented, you could see that there is a lot directly behind it. So with that addition, that lot behind it is completely open. And the review of historic preservation is from any right-of-way within the historic district. So Birch Avenue, which faces back there, has visibility of this new addition. And I think that you could see on the comments that were made by HPC that they were interested in the applicant coming back for them to kind of work with them to create a more compatible architectural element. And I know that the zoning board is not interested in that, and I know that they struggled with the last application, but that is something that HPC works with, to contain some type of integrity of the historic neighborhood, which is contained with the Witherspoon-Jackson district. In addition, the Historic Preservation Commission also considered other elements which are under the purview of zoning board, but also is subject to their review as it relates to historic preservation, such as, as they had discussed, the neighborhood is a mix of single-family and duplexes. They existed that way. That's the way they were constructed. So some of the commission members were concerned with altering the character of that structure to make it look not such, so much like a single-family as they would if there was a property that was a duplex, and they wanted to convert it to a single-family. So they wanted to retain this mix, but at the same time, retain the character that is existed within the neighborhood. And the same thing with parking. They were concerned about parking. Is this going to create a parking issue? Again, this is a streetscape issue that they were looking at. So I just wanted to bring those...
What on earth can the Historic Preservation Committee do about parking?
Well...
People park on the street.
No, we understand that... But when they look at variances where they need to endorse or not endorse an element, those were items that they discussed at the meeting.
I'm sure they did.
So that's why. So with that said, we respectfully ask that the zoning board return the application back to HPC so they can make their recommendations, which is something that the zoning board should consider, their comments, and not disregard it. But it's hard when there are comments made on an application that's different than what's in front.
My understanding of the role of the HPC is that it is a advisory to the zoning board.
Correct.
We have had advice from you this evening, and I don't think the applicant, if we do what they want, should have to come to you again for you to give them advice. Your advisory to us, as I understand it...
Correct.
You can't stop them building if they have a permit to build.
But what I'm saying is that the Historic Preservation Commission would be able to create a memo that was more accurate to the application before you, and it would address the comments more specifically.
It's water under the bridge, to be honest with...
Well, I...
Would you, as the applicant, need to go back to HPC? No.
I apologize. With all due respect, I have been to the HPC twice over the course of a year. I have responded very clearly to all of the requests in the letter that was submitted. And I offered to meet with the subcommittee of the HPC prior to coming to this meeting, to which I received a negative response. I apologize. Every time I show up to the HPC, there are new variances asked for. With all due respect, I mean, enough is enough. And one way to make this affordable is to not ask for more variances and actually let this move forward. It's been over... It's been over a year. One thing to make it, it's scientifically proven that properties with no parking are less expensive and therefore more affordable, just in that. I know this is getting emotional, and it's getting really late, but they're advisory board to you, and I think we should just make a decision today and move on. I'm, thank you.
Board members, just one question, if I might ask Ms. Kim. There is a letter from Ms. Rubina in the package dated June 13, 2018, in which she says she is responding to plan check comments. Have you had a chance to look at that? The reason I'm asking is because since the property is in a historic district, which was created not that long ago, the role of the HPC is to be able to advise you how this structure can more, should we say, appropriately maintain the character of that historic district. So I'm trying to determine if, in fact, the comments that Ms. Rubina's made already, did they address some of HPC concerns? Because then we can try and make those conditions of an approval, if that's what the board intends to do, rather than disregard HPC entirely.
All of those have been already incorporated in the packets that you have received. All of those comments have been addressed, and in the pocket that you have have all been responded to. The only one that's to be decided is to include the stair or not to include the stair. That's, all the landscaping has been addressed.
To address Ms. Casey's comment, this application did come in with the resubmission. However, we understood this was a new application, and it was going to be reviewed, so it was not reviewed for these items on here.
You received that in June.
Right.
You received that letter in June.
Which was after they had already come to HPC.
You're saying...
Excuse me, they responded.
Correct.
And you didn't react to that?
No, because it came back as a review that went through zoning again. So we don't necessarily review everything when it becomes a new application until it comes back to us. That's why we were surprised it didn't come back to us. For us...
I knew the application was coming before the board, coming before this board, and that letter you received almost two months ago, and the HPC didn't look at it.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just state that if you look at the...
Let's move on from here. I'm not interested in squabbles between various parts of the government of the town. What is your pleasure? We've heard the case. It seems to me that C variance would have been whatever. The D variance for the enclosed stairs and the redesign of the house makes good sense to me. And the fact that it is a house with an owner occupying that can have a flat, if the owner-occupier wants it, is fine. It's being prepared for that. The parking issue, I think, is just a realistic one. One has, I don't think one can say you can't occupy a house because there's no parking on the street.
That's true.
And you can't get access to the lot because of the way the area has been built. So from my viewpoint, I'm less negative about this than when I came in. And I don't think it's a half-bad thing. I think one of the real problems is talking about affordability. And I think the argument of being an owner-occupier with the ability to rent a part of the house to make it more affordable to you, the owner, is about the best one can hope for in a town that is essentially built out. So from my viewpoint, I think they've made a fairly good case. I shouldn't have said all of that upfront. You should have said it all in the...
I agree with you.
I think it's a sensitive solution. I think we see things that come forward that need very little variances but are not a sensitive solution. This needs some variances, but it is a sensitive solution, given the constraints of the site.
I look at maybe four hurdles. The historic preservation, it wants it to go back to historic preservation. I do feel that they've generated a memo that looks at most of the historic aspects of the building, so I can't see making it go back to historic preservation. I think most, the facade's not going to change. The materials that she's proposing isn't going to change. So the next one is the abandonment issue. Now, okay, Mr. McQueen died in 2012. You bought the property in 2017. Was there a tenant in there in between, in that flat? And I didn't know what the answer was going to be, yes or no. You say, no, there wasn't. That starts leaning towards the abandonment side because the McQueen estate is the owner, was the owner, I mean, at that time.
No.
It got foreclosed in 2012?
It was not occupied after the original owner was removed. It has, that's the only time it was unoccupied, both units.
Well, was it foreclosed on before Mr. McQueen died?
No, after. His son lived there with a tenant.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
So the McQueen estate owned it after Mr. McQueen died.
And both units were occupied.
That's what my question was.
Right. The only time both units were empty were at the same time when this financial institution owned it because they had to go through all the processes to sell it.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Right.
Okay. That's the abandonment. The owner-occupied issue, you've got the commitment from the applicant that this can be conditioned to, when it will be sold to an owner-occupant. That kind of gets over the flat. Even if the flat did expire, my guess is we're going to extend it anyway. So I can get past that. And then is the stairs. And the stairs, to me, is a minor thing. You're not going to shrink the addition as far as living space. You'd only, either you'd build an exterior stairwell or an interior, and you need the variance for that. So I can support this for those reasons. The affordability, it won't be affordable to people I know.
I would add the stormwater management plan as a condition as well, given the grade of the property and the additional bulk. But the applicant indicated that she was willing to do that, and as we understand, it's being problematic.
Do you have any comments, Mr. Cohen?
Just agree with everything that's been said before. So if appropriate, Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion to approve with the conditions that we've set. Our normal lighting conditions, the stormwater conditions. If I'm believing anything else...
You've made a motion to approve.
I have.
As a C1 variance, Mr. Tenenbaum, or...
It's my understanding we've got to do C and D unless I'm...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. But as far as the C goes, as a hardship variance, a C1.
If that is what counsel is suggesting, then I will follow the lead of counsel.
Well, we haven't had any planning testimony tonight, so, I mean, the lot is undersized and the dimensions have been non-compliant for a long time, so...
So then a C1 and a D.
Second.
Have a second as to the motion.
Do we have to say anything for future generations about the parking, just so that's clear, or do we just leave it?
Well, we have, we've given a variance for the parking.
Okay, all right.
For the parking.
Got it.
So that will be here as well.
All right, just that'll be clear for the future. That's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, I think. Okay, so we have a motion. Is there any further discussion?
Board members, one question that's been raised. In the HPC memo, is this the condition about a subcommittee for the windows? Is that what Ms. Kim...
They had done a, they suggested that due to the visibility of the rear addition from Birch Avenue, the applicant shall work with the appointed HPC committee to achieve a simpler rear design that would be more compatible with the Witherspoon-Jackson historic district. The applicant, or the subcommittee, should be notified at the time of the work on the house to permit the exposed existing window fenestrations to be inspected and to verify originality and size. And they have a subcommittee. That was their recommendation to look at those items.
It's all good. They can come look at the windows. Good.
And the tower or the stairs.
And the tower.
They look, they can look at everything. They can look at the back. They can look at the windows, the old windows. They can look, yes.
And just our standard lighting and drainage. Yes, well, I think the lighting is particularly important.
Always.
Because of the nature of the area and drainage we've talked about. So that will be on there. Okay, so let's call the roll, please.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. Cohen?
Mr. Cohen, I can't understand. Yes, yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. Are you going to air-condition the place? I hope you worry about the noise and put the air conditioners up high. We are a gym. You didn't have a coat because it wasn't raining. It's raining hard.